Well, good evening in Placerville and welcome to city council meeting tonight for March 10th, 2020. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening again and welcome. I am going to hopefully move along our meeting briskly tonight. My allergies are messing with me, so my voice, we'll see how long my voice lasts us tonight. If not, Vice Mayor Thomas may be handed the gavel here. So, want to go ahead and jump right in then? Roll call, please.
Mayor Saragossa?
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Here.
Councilmember Acuna?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item three, announcements and presentations to the public by brief comments by city council. And I will start with Councilmember Taylor.
All right. I voted on March 3rd. I attended a homelessness town hall meeting on Sunday. Councilmember Thomas was also there, or Vice Mayor, sorry. And it was very informative and productive, and I just wanted to give a thanks out to Maureen Dion Perry with the Western Slope Coalition on Affordable Housing and Homelessness for organizing it, along with all the speakers who contributed to the conversation. There was a very courageous young woman, Emma, who shared her experience as a homeless child, Cheyenne Purington of South Lake Tahoe Homeless Coalition, Dawn Simone with Eldorado County HHS, Peter Brown with The Lighted Candle, and Supervisor Heidel. And I also met with the Placerville Unified School District Superintendent Eric Bonnixon, and we discussed power outages and school closures, along with homeless youth in the school system, and challenges facing the district and public education in general. So, that's what I've been up to.
Great, thank you, Karen. Councilmember Borelli?
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend that meeting on Sunday, and I fully intended to. But I also missed the dinner where we honored, the American Legion Dinner, where we honored our recipient, and I was given the wrong date, so I did not go to that either. So, anyway, but I want to congratulate Officer Erin Pratt for his, and congratulate him, so.
Absolutely.
That's it.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
All right. Good evening. I had the opportunity to attend three meetings in the last seven days. One of them was a two-by-two with the county regarding homelessness, the COC meeting, Continuum of Care, Elrod Opportunity Knox, and also I was able to, on Sunday, attend the Western Slopes Coalition for Affordable Housing and Homelessness meeting that they had. Since this is somewhat of an, somewhat, this is an important topic, I'm going to take just a minute to highlight some of the, my takeaways from, to all those meetings put together. With the new information regarding the availability of, for transitional housing, the Armory, it was important that we at least had a conversation about that with the city, and see what it looked with the city and the county, as well as COC, and see what it looked like to move that forward. At the two-by-two, it was determined that the city and the county needed some directional policy, the staff needed some direction, they couldn't just jump right into working on this project without direction from both the city council and the board supervisors. So jointly, we're working on a policy statement with county staff and city staff to bring back to the city council and the board supervisors for their consideration. And if it's approved, and what it looks like, it'll help us move towards evaluating the possibility of working together, and what it would look like working towards some solutions regarding homelessness with, when it comes to the Armory or other facilities. Now, this is a very basic description of a very complicated process that we would go through to consider the potential for the Armory. And in order to use the money, not only does Armory have to be available to us, and we have to be able to get it from the state, it has to be in alignment with the COC and their, what do we call that, their strategic plan. And that's what it takes to get the money to start working on the Armory. So, all these entities, so we have, that makes three government agencies, and the COC that need to get on the same page. And that's our goal, and we're going to, and we're going to work towards that goal, too. We've certainly heard from the public, we've heard from, I've heard privately from a lot of people, and we know that this is an important issue in our community. And that's one of the things that, at least for me, I'm working towards finding some opportunities and solutions. It's not a short-term fix, it's a long-term goal. And I don't see this, you know, I see us working on it, I don't see, you know, really having meaningful discussions until later in the fall, when everybody starts getting together. So, the idea that the Armory is ready to unlock the doors and move into next week is not possible, and it's going to take a coordinated effort. There are so many issues involved with the Armory, as we've discussed, all the way from just the idea that if we put people in it, we may have to sprinkler it and come up to code, fire code, before we can even put residents within the facility. And so, we're looking at the cost of all these expenses, and that's important. In the meantime, if, and I know homeless is important, I encourage you to stay for the entire meeting. And, I know, right? If you're really diligent about this, in providing more affordable low-income housing, I think it's important, because there's a couple of issues on our agenda that actually address those issues. And your knowledge and awareness of this is going to be important as we move forward. We have at least two locations that are coming up for, that are attempting to get grant funding to put, I don't know what the number is, it's over 100 units of affordable housing in our community, which is what we need to transition homelessness out of transitional care to a place of permanent residency. And so, that is also something that the city is working on. So, I strongly recommend you stick around for the meeting for that. And I would also like to check in with probably John Driscoll on our PRA request and the, our costs associated with that, if you have any more information.
I have information on one of the requests, but I don't have it on all of them.
Okay, just, there's one in particular that has really consumed a lot of our-
The large request, we had a conference call with our outside council last week, and we have identified 30-some thousand documents. They have had the ability to cull that down to, first cut 18,000, and now down around 8,000. And we're talking about doing a progressive release of these documents, as everybody has the opportunity to go through them. That's just emails. My voice is kind of getting like the mayor's, excuse me.
I swear I'm not spreading it.
There are other documents that would be in response to that request as well, that are electronically stored like emails are. So, it's going to take quite a while. I mean, we're projecting it's probably going to take at least six months to fully respond to that request. And I can't tell you what the cost is, because I don't know.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the initial cost of attorney fees is starting at $5,000.
That's certainly a reasonable estimate, and I think it's going to be more than that by the time we're through.
Okay, so this one PRA request is costing the city out of our general fund $5,000?
Minimum.
Minimum, all right. And that's not including staff time?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't know, Regina, if you had anything to add?
And that's from the Wampanis Nissan Tribe?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have for today, so thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak a little longer than normal.
Thank you.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to everybody. First, I'd like to thank everybody that's taking the opportunity to keep working on clearing their lots, their house, pads, whatever you might own, being a responsible neighbor, and doing your best. The city is working, I'm sure diligently, to make sure that all of our facilities are going to be ready for what looks to be a very early, early fire season. Let's hope that we have a wet spring through some stroke of luck. Last meeting, I asked, I was inquisitive as to who I would be able to thank for all the cleanup work that Caltrans did on the old Broadway on-ramp, off-ramp area on the eastbound side, and I now know that it was our very own Vice Mayor Thomas, it was our folks over at Eldorado County Transportation Commission, and specifically their Caltrans liaison person, who attends those meetings every month, and does indeed take back requests from the city. So, that particular area has been an eyesore for many, many years, and it looks much, much better. So, thank you to those folks for continuing to bring that need forward and make that happen. And I'm on a bit of a roll here, I'll go to thanking Nick Stone again and his Public Works crew. They, last week, filled in a pothole that I'm sure we could have seen from space, if we had just zeroed in on it, is the Ivy House parking lot entrance off of Clay Street. It was an absolute crater. I don't know how either a car or a small child hadn't been lost in it, and his crew did an excellent job of digging it all out and getting it all smooth, much safer, drives great, Nick. And it will be a nice surprise, I'm sure, for the farmer's market when it opens here very soon, so thank you guys for doing that. And he's also very diligently had his crews out, taking advantage of our summertime weather in February and March, and got some horrible holes on Upper Main Street fixed last week by the Independence Restaurant, the Brewery, et cetera. Those have been nasty for a long time, so thank you, and thank the crew for taking advantage of what Mother Nature sends our way. You guys are doing a great service, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Just a few comments from me. First, I want to echo what Vice Mayor Thomas said, I hope everybody does stick around for both the budget, as well as the affordable, or affordable housing projects that are on here as well. As we talk about our homelessness issues in Placerville, it's important to also look at those other two items as part of a holistic approach to how we finish things, and that is the budget, and where we get funding from, as well as the housing, that will be the long-term solution for certain people. So, certainly want everyone to stay for those, and listen to those presentations. In terms of the other issues of the day, I think we've all seen our TVs, and gone to stores, and noticed a lack of hand sanitizer, and toilet paper, and other household items that people have scooped up along the way. And I just want to let our residents know in Placerville that we're working hand-in-hand with our county counterparts, and I'm very pleased tonight to have our partners at the county. So, Dr. Nancy Williams is here, and I wanted to invite her up to just give a brief kind of update on where we are in Eldorado County, and what we're doing together to keep other citizens informed. So, thank you again for being here tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, again, I'm Nancy Williams, Public Health Officer for the county. So, this is a really brief COVID-19 update. I wasn't going to talk about hand sanitizer or toilet paper, but those are great topics, too. So, just the status right now, you probably are aware that there still are no confirmed cases in our county, and we, I think the latest updates have been that that cruise ship docked yesterday, and they started to remove passengers from that. That is actually not going to pose any issues for our county, because everybody from California is going to the federal facility, I believe it's Travis Air Force Base, and they will spend their 14 days of quarantine there. Anybody who develops any symptoms either will be isolated, and I guess in the same facility, away from everybody else. Anybody who needs medical care will go to a medical facility, but nobody will come back to our county until they've been cleared. So, that's a totally different situation than happened in the last cruise ship, so this is really the way it's supposed to work, and I feel much better about that. So, at least we don't have new, unknown people coming to our county with bringing disease, at least not from the cruise ship. So, that said, that could be happening from other sites at this point, so a number of counties have really been overly burdened by the number of cases that they've detected, and then each of those sort of turns into a result of having to do case investig, or contact investigations, and then monitoring new people, and getting people quarantined, and then eventually that catches up to some new cases, and then eventually the health department doesn't have enough people to make all those calls anymore, and then some of them go undetected. And that's happened, and at this point now, it's happened in Placer County, Sacramento County, I think to some extent Yolo County. Solado County was the first county that announced a case, and that was actually a few weeks ago now, that was determined to be community transmission, meaning that there was no known source of the illness. Santa Clara County has also had quite a few cases that are, have been just sourced to the community. So, hasn't happened with us yet, there's a good chance that some spillover is either happening or about to happen from one of our neighboring counties, or other visitors to our county, and that will have some cases here before too long. We are still able to keep up within our public health department with these case investigations that, or should say contact investigations, from cases that have happened outside our county and other counties. Those are generally returned travelers who are coming from, at this point, Italy, or still some people are coming back from China, that sort of thing, as well as a handful of healthcare workers who might have been exposed to patients in their hospitals, which are generally down in Sacramento County. We haven't had anybody, again, who's, we had a couple of people who were symptomatic from the previous cruise ship who tested negative, and then everybody else we followed, and they finished their 14 days without symptoms. So, that's all good news for us so far. Again, we don't know what we don't see, so there could be there's something else happening out there that will pop up any day now, very likely to, I think. When that happens, public health is likely not to be able to keep up, just like these other counties have not been able to keep up, and we would shift our focus on this trying to contain by doing every single case tracing, person by person by person, because we can't do it anymore, to this what they're calling mitigation phase. Just today, yesterday Sacramento County announced that it's moving to its mitigation phase, and Placer and Yolo Counties, which are the other two counties in the Sacramento region with regional, our community transmission, are, announced that today. So, we're following that closely, that's what we will have to do when we get to where we can't keep up anymore. Mitigation means, again, not tracing people, person by person, not being able to really kind of police the 14-day quarantines, but relying on people's education, knowing that if they are sick, they need to stay home, you know, only going to medical care if they're really ill and need medical care, but otherwise doing the best they can to stay out of the community, so they're not infecting other people. And anybody who is contact, close contact to somebody who, at this point, you know, you say almost doesn't, doesn't even necessarily test positive, but maybe is presumed to be positive for one reason or another, they could self-quarantine. But again, we probably won't know about those people, and so we can't, not that we really are enforcing it, but at least, you know, touch base with those people, because we wouldn't have staff to do it. So, we'll be doing more and more messaging about social distancing, getting people to think about the, you know, obviously the hand sanitation and other cleaning at home and that kind of thing, and possibly considering curtailing some of the, or reducing some of the community gatherings and that sort of thing. And that'll depend on a lot of factors, and those will probably have to be considered one at a time with all the partners involved. So, at the county, we've been working harder and harder to try to make sure that we're having lots of conversations with our partners. We've been meeting with the school districts for superintendents, for example, because they have a lot of concerns about school dismissals, and what happens with students possibly getting infected and passing things on to their other students, and to the teachers, and to their family members, and all that. So, we know in a lot of illnesses, children are real super-spreaders of things, and fortunately, they don't seem to be as sick, so they're probably not as efficient spreaders as they are with some of the illnesses, but they will still spread illness, possibly undetected. So, a lot of education there. There are no really easy answers to any of these things, about things like dismissing schools, or canceling events, that kind of thing. So, we're trying to start with the things that are most agreeable, I think, to everybody when they've heard all the facts, and we work together with our partners to help counsel on decisions, but not to make the decisions for them. So, you know, I would say as a health officer, I have the power to do some things, I could, you know, shut down an event or that sort of thing if I want, if I wanted to, but I will pledge never to do that in a vacuum. I think everybody has to be informed and be part of the decision-making process, so we're trying to communicate as much as possible upfront, and also keep everybody informed of, as the situation changes.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Council, anyone have questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams, being here this evening, we certainly do appreciate it, and we appreciate the chance to share with the community that we are doing everything as partners, as we usually do, and to protect the citizens and everyone traveling through the county to the best of our abilities. This afternoon on Channel 3, I believe it was, I saw the health director from Sacramento County, and also representing Yolo and Placer, state that they no longer were going to recommend a 14-day quarantine period. Is, and that, of course, the story was entitled, you know, "Update on the Virus and New Confusion as to What Should Folks Do." Is that true, that they don't see a value in that, or what's the county's, our county's perspective?
Well, I think we'll look at that when the time comes, we're certainly not at the point where we need to do that, and that's really, you know, an ideal situation, if you don't have too many people infected, you continue to quarantine people and monitor them. I think the point where we can't, where we can't watch anymore, you would say, people, the message there is, the point of quarantine is to be able to watch somebody for developing symptoms, so that they're not out in public, but we will message instead, basically, as soon as you feel like you might have symptoms, you need to stay home. So, the staying home when you're sick thing is sort of the main message that takes the place of that.
It was, thank you. And it was very clear that he was leaning towards suggesting that people begin to think of this as a normal flu. Now, whether you agree with that or not, is, I thought, boy, I don't know if this is the time to bring that kind of a-
Yeah.
-there at 5:00 this evening.
Okay, that was probably Ron, that was probably Ron Chapman from Yolo County, because I think they, and Placer County, followed the Sacramento announcement yesterday, that was yesterday, with their own announcement, which is something that, I was involved in a conference call the other day to help, kind of, help draft a document that originally we were going to issue on a regional basis, and I didn't feel comfortable that we were ready to do that in our county, because I think taking those measures, while we can still do higher level of maybe containment in our county, and also because I don't think people will take it as seriously if there's no case here. So, we want to get the public's attention at the time when they're most ready to listen, so that's kind of where we're going with that. But as far as it being a normal flu, I think the symptoms may be very similar, the transmission may be very similar to a type of flu, and flus vary in severity from year to year. However, the thing that's different is we don't have a population that's at all immune, you know, only these handful of people that have had it already are immune. Everybody else, all the rest of us, probably everybody in this room is susceptible to this, because there's no vaccination, and nobody's ever had it before. So, that means it's way, it's going to spread through the community way more easily than it would a normal flu season.
Thank you very much.
And I thought of one other thing I wanted to mention, just because my staff was really taxed today with lots and lots of questions about testing, because the announcement was that yesterday Quest Diagnostics and, I think LabCorp is coming soon, and there's another commercial laboratory called ARUP, which is based in Utah, but does testing nationally, would be available to do lots more of this COVID-19 testing. And I think you've probably heard the governor say, you know, everybody should get tested, you know, just demand to get tested, and well, that's happening now, but we don't have those tests, they don't have the capabilities like are being expressed. And so, there still needs to be a lot of prioritization of who gets tested, and so only really the highest acuity patients are getting tested. The Sacramento County Public Lab really can only do about 20-person tests per day, which is really, really a small number. The state health department can do a few more, so these commercial labs are adding quite a bit of capability, but two of them aren't even online yet, and the third one, I guess, is just taking a little while, longer to ramp up. So, I, if, as much as possible, we're really trying to get the message out for people, just to stay home if possible, don't go ask to be tested, because you're probably putting other people at risk of getting exposed if you do have it. And really practically speaking, staying home is the answer, people don't necessarily need to know what disease they have.
Thank you very much for the update.
I have a question. Thank you for your presentation. Do you have any information about when supplies and things like hand sanitizer will be available again for the public, and also for, you know, public agencies and schools that are also running into shortages?
There, I'm not so sure about the hand sanitizers and that sort of thing. I know that the personal protective equipment, specifically the N95 masks, which are the types that are worn by healthcare workers to protect healthcare workers, and then what you'd call procedure or hospital or surgical masks, the more soft, loose kinds are ones to protect other people from somebody possibly with illness who might cough on or sneeze on them. Those are both in short supply. I think the California Department of Public Health released some, I guess they're technically expired supplies of the N95s to healthcare workers. They said they assured everybody that they were, had been kept in really good climate control environment, and they're probably not really expired from a practical standpoint, so they're handing those out to the first responders and other people who need them. I know that there's some supplies of the hospital masks and stuff, I don't think they're going to be available to the public, they're going to be available to healthcare workers for most of the part. So, it'd be great if somebody is busy ramping up production of those, but I don't really know where that stands. I do remember hearing the governor mention that they, you know, there'd been some price gouging on some of these things, and that they, I guess the governor was going to use his powers to try to make that not happen, and I gather they've had already negotiated with Amazon to stop their sellers from price gouging on that. But I think as far as going to the store and getting the stuff off the shelves, you know, we're all in the same boat right now.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got a question in terms of, I would assume there's coordination with Marshall Hospital as well, in terms of just being aware and protocols, or is that accurate?
Right, like, yeah, like any hospital, Marshall has an infection prevention, this team, actually, more than one person there, and they're in frequent communication with our communicable disease staff, we send them all of the medical, or the health provider updates, they also get copies of those from the state health department, we're, now they ask us questions, we communicate with them frequently. So, yes, that and same thing at Barton Health, and also our community health centers and others, we're trying to, we're trying to make sure everybody's well-informed.
Great, thank you. Well, if you don't mind, I know we'll have public comment a little bit later into the agenda, we may have questions that come from the public, if you don't mind sticking around for a little bit longer.
Sure.
We may, we may have a couple more questions from the, from our audience, from our constituents. But again, I want to thank you, Dr. Williams, for being here tonight, and continue to work with you. I know you're in close contact with Cleve and our city manager and our staff, so again, thank you for taking the time tonight, just to, I think, you know, give out that information to the public, allow, ensure that everyone knows that we're working on this, we have a plan in place, and that in Eldorado County, at least to this point, we don't have any cases.
Right, okay, yes, thank you, I really appreciate being here, too.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move to item four, closed session report. We didn't have a closed session today, so we can go ahead and move past that one, so item five, adoption of agenda.
Mr. Mayor? I'll reel to Councilmember Taylor.
I was going to say, I moved to adopt the agenda with one change, and that's moving item 15, the staff reports, up to right above number seven.
Oh, well, can I, before I second that, I was going to suggest that we move 15.1, 15.1 or 2, which-
Well, I was thinking we could just do both of them, yeah.
Both fire safety. I would also suggest that we move mid-year budget review, 12.1, before item 7, and we should also perhaps consider moving items 12.2 and 12.3. Both of those deal with the first steps for affordable housing applications on two different sites. One is the Mallard-
12.4 also.
12.4, well.
Just move the whole agenda, let's just-
I was, the second ones, I thought just for the flavor, so that those folks that are concerned could see the efforts that each project, I mean, there's other steps, there are other things in the agenda for both of those sites. One is Mallard, one is Cold Springs.
Middletown.
Middletown, thank you, Patty, because those are the efforts that an applicant in a city has to go through, so.
You said put seven above the, right after-
Put 15 right above seven, so the staff report on the vegetation management, ordinance.
And I thought it would be nice to have an audience for the mid-year budget review, because there's concerns about cash flow in the city, and these have been difficult, it's been a difficult year.
So, you want to put that after-
Before seven. Before seven. I believe that was what Councilmember Taylor's-
Before public comment.
Base, basic.
I was thinking item 15 before public comment. I'm, I think the budget, it would be important for people to hear the budget, too.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that we should either release, or thank Dr. Williams for coming and-
Yeah, she's going to-
Allow you to go home at this point, if we're going to move those-
Correct.
Or have public comment before these-
I agree.
...put them right after. So, I would, whatever you all want to do, but that's, you know, that's my concern, is they're busy people, having long days, and-
Yeah.
I really appreciate them coming down and talking to us today, so.
Karen, do you- Karen, do you...
And Mark, you want to put what, 12...
Budget review, 12.1, 12.2, and 12.3, just to hit the first steps as to going towards affordable housing projects on those sites. So that we would have, so that the audience gets an opportunity to hear what is involved with all those steps, as well as know what the financial health of the city is. And I thank Councilmember Taylor, because I was concerned, too, about having an audience for the update from Chief Cordero and the efforts for fire safety, because we are rapidly running out of wet, cool weather.
Okay, so I'm looking at it, and there's not too many items that are ahead of that, Mark.
I'm saying doing it right after ceremonial. So it would be before public comment, it would be before consent calendar.
I mean, I don't care. I'm just saying that there's not too many things that we have for discussion in between. So, fine.
So do you need a second?
I'll second. If that was your motion, I'll, I'll second it.
Including with, with the 12.1 through 12.3?
Yeah, 15.1 and you go.
So I think Dr. Williams will, we can, we can all, if there's more questions, we will, we will get those to you. So, again, thank you. If you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome, but certainly there's, there's no need to as well.
We've moved things around.
So again, thank you.
The intent is to bring these items up so that the public has an opportunity to hear them now and not at 10:00 this evening. Because they are, they are very relevant to their concerns that has been expressed in the last couple of months.
Okay, so we have a first and a second?
Can I, can I just, so we're doing 15.1, then 12.1, 12.2, 12.3, is that correct? And then we'll...
That's correct.
That would be right after item six.
Right, so basically after...
Before public comment, correct?
Correct. Okay, we have a, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? All right, agenda is adopted. Okay, so there are no ceremonial items tonight, item six. So we will move on to then item 15.1, which is the vegetation ordinance enforcement. And this is a verbal report, and I believe Mr. Revas has this report for us tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll be brief. I want to start by giving some statistics on where we are in terms of open and closed fire and vegetation code cases that we're currently working on. So beginning in January of 2019 through October 12th of 2019, October 12th being the date that our ordinance became effective, we had at that time 22 cases that involved dead or dying trees. And then we had another 30 cases that involved dead brush or brush that would constitute a fire hazard. And then from October 12th to the present, we've added two additional trees, and then four additional cases were opened with regards to hazardous brush. So looking at the total number of code enforcement cases we have regarding hazardous, hazardous vegetation cases, and this would be 2018 to present, we had a total, we had a total number of cases opened, it's 72. And then out of those 72, we've been able to close 34, meaning the property owners came into full compliance. So we currently have 38 open cases. So that's where we are in terms of our workload, just looking at our hazardous, hazardous vegetation cases. Staff is working very closely with El Dorado County Fire, the Fire Marshal. And what we're concentrating on are those more egregious properties that would constitute a extreme or severe fire hazard, both, you know, within the property and surrounding properties. Most of these are larger parcels where maybe we have camps and those kinds of things, which, you know, people maybe have unattended fires, or they're, you know, starting fires in the middle of the night. And so we're trying to keep those properties cleaned up. El Dorado County Fire has identified three to four, I think they're working on a fourth one, but they're letting us know when they go about doing their rounds, which are the particular properties then that the, that the city staff needs to concentrate on. So we'll contact the property owners and go through the enforcement process. So with that also, I want to give a public notice that on March 28th, and that is a Saturday, we're going to have our Fire Safe Fair here at Town Hall. And I believe, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's going to start at 9:00 a.m. and run through 1:00 p.m. in the afternoon. And so we're going to have city staff there, we'll have El Dorado County Fire staff there, CAL FIRE, U.S. Forest Service, Fire Safe Council, and we'll have various tables set up with brochures and information. And it'll be run sort of like an open house. It'll give the public the opportunity to, you know, spend some time in a relaxed atmosphere and go to the various booths and talk to the various experts that are there that can address their questions. I passed out to each of you a brochure that we were able to get some bulk copies of, and it's, and it's fairly nice. It's, it's a foldable brochure that is basically entitled Creating Defensible Space to Help Survive a Wild Storm/Ember Storm. And so if you open it up, it has a lot of different real helpful drawings, how to deal with the fuel, say, from zone zero, which is zero to five feet, from all buildings, decks, and structures. And we have a zone one. It gives helpful hints on how to deal with reducing fuels in that five to 30-foot area around structures in your home, and then the entire property. We go out, that's typically zone, zone two or zone three, where it goes out to 100 feet from the building. This was from California Fire Safe Council. You know, very pleased that we got about, and we didn't, we didn't have to pay for these either. We probably have several thousand of these copies. So as we go about doing our rounds, we're trying to distribute these wherever we can, get them out in the hands of the public and the property owners. And we have some in the back as well. So if there's anybody here that's interested in picking up one of these, we have some in the back for, for the public. So with that, that's a brief update on where staff is with our fire ordinance and our update on our code enforcement activities. Happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Revas. Patty, any questions?
I just want to add to that, Pierre. I was going to announce it when I gave my Fire Safe report, but the county, I mean, the city website has been updated, and there's tons of information there, too. So I just pulled it, I just put Placerville Fire Safe Council in, and it all popped up. So there's lots of information on there, too.
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. We did, we updated the links, we made, we made the information more visible on our website.
Yeah.
So I know there were comments made at our last council meeting that the, that the information was not there. It actually was there, it just takes a little fishing around, and so we put it, I think we have it in three different spots.
Yeah.
So it clearly will jump out at somebody if that's what they're looking at, trying to find.
Yeah, it's great.
Plus, we have all the links to all the other agencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I had one.
Yep.
Vice Mayor. Thank you. Pierre, can you tell us if the Lumsden Ranch property is part of your ongoing investigations when you're open cases?
Yes, it is. And we're currently working with the property owner and with the fire district. We're looking at assistance from the fire district to actually assess what would be the appropriate distance from the adjoining properties. Say, typically, you're looking at 30 feet. But I think because of the topography and the nature of the hazards out there, we're probably looking at requiring 100-foot setback from certain portions of that property. So we, we are in contact with the property owner, and we will take more aggressive enforcement action if we don't get appropriate response from that property owner.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll share that with the concerned neighbors that contact me on a fairly regular basis to let them know that we're looking for the appropriate remedies. The one last thing, and I assume that this, since this came from the Fire Safe Council, that one of the things that we did last year when we crafted our fire ordinance is we were going to have the, the various handouts to, and we didn't want to hold up the process with the ordinance to, to, you know, necessarily get the graphics. Well, this certainly looks like it hopefully meshes very well with everything that we've, you know, the city, the fire district, the Fire Safe Council, CAL FIRE have all been, I'll say, preaching at us now for two or three years, well, much longer than that. But, so thank you very much for obtaining a large number of these. This just looks easy to follow, very clear, very helpful.
The Fire Safe Council has a ton of these.
Okay, so that, thank you, Patty, I appreciate that. Nothing worse than having conflicting brochures.
In Chris's garage. She's trying to get them all out there.
Thank you.
I agree on that. I, I think, I mean, the pictures here, and I remember the first one we saw last year looked like a subdivision in, in South Orange County.
Yeah.
So it wasn't really a great help to anyone that lives in Placerville when it comes to, you know, how you would address your, your own property. So these are great, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, I will go ahead and open up to the public if any of them would like to comment on this item, on the vegetation ordinance update.
Good evening. Sue Rodman. And I go to the Fire Safe Council meetings, and I think that this would be a good brochure to put in the water bills when they go out this next month. And remind people. And I am really glad to hear that we are hammering on Lumsden Ranch. And I hope we're getting on to the people that are next to escaton, too, that have that large piece of property that would certainly take out a lot of escaton if it were to burn. So enforcement is the name of the game. If you don't enforce it, you don't really have an ordinance.
Thank you, Sue. And good evening, Jennifer.
Hi, I'm actually wearing my Forest Service hat for this one, which is just to say, there is actually a fire vegetation demonstration, fire safety related tomorrow in Camino, and it's a landowner, the LBS Ranch. But anyway, the address is 2020 Fruit Ridge, which is a short walk to his property, and he's gotten grants from NRCS to, there are grants available to private landowners, even as small of a landowner as one acre in size. But it's for vegetation management, and so he's going to just talk and share and have some actual equipment. And S-MUD is also going to be talking about their clearance around power lines. So I think some of you are on my email list from that email list, but if not...
Jennifer, what time is it? I, I was going to give that in my report, too, but I didn't know.
Great, 10:30.
10:30, that's right.
At 2020 Fruit Ridge.
Okay.
And Ben Schur...
Ben Schur.
Is the host.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening.
I want to thank you for bringing this towards the front, because it's a very important subject, and I appreciate hearing about the workshop that's coming up. And yes, it's a great brochure, but I want to suggest that you have an insert specifically about the ordinance in Placerville. These are the things that I, wanting to avoid enforcement actions, want to know. When does the clearance have to take place? What's the deadline? If we started right now, for example, we know we're going to have another rain, I've cleared property before, and then the rain comes and grass goes up. Secondly, how high or how low does the vegetation have to be? Three inches, five, six? And how far from a building and how far from a road or highway? So on, on this, when you fold it out, it has some information, but is that the law in the city? I don't know. It's good to know it's on the website, but it's a hard thing to find generally.
Not now, it's been redone.
I'm glad. I will look for it. But anyway, that would be very helpful, because I know last year there was a lot of discussion about there'd be this aggressive effort to educate the public before it went into effect. So I was surprised to hear its actions have been taken place since 2018. But that would be helpful, is if you had those specific dates and, and specific numbers in here, because I don't know if, if these numbers equate with the local ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Any final comments from City Council? Mr. Revas, could you respond on the, just the, the zones in terms of what's on this flyer versus what's in our ordinance? In terms of the compatibility?
No, in staff's opinion, this is, this is extremely compatible. In fact, I think this goes even, it's more restrictive than, than our code. For example, from zero to five feet, this is actually stating that there, you know, the goal is to have no combustible materials within five feet of any building, deck, or structure. So that's, that's very, very, very restrictive. So that would conform with the Public Resources Code as well, that's referenced in, in the city code. Zone one is five to 30 feet. And again, I think it, it gives depths. It basically states that fallen leaves, needles, twigs, bark, small branches to a depth of two inches. So in our opinion, if you follow this, you'd be in compliance, and your house would be pretty safe.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Morris, do you have a comment here?
Well, not, not a lot. I, pretty much the same as what Pierre said. If you follow this, you, I believe you will be in compliance with our code. It may be in a couple areas, as you mentioned, the zero to five feet around the home is, is more strict than what ours is, but I promise you, it won't hurt you in, in terms of being, having your home safe.
And the insurance companies want it that way.
Right, right, so.
Well, and would it be possible to get these out in a, in a water bill?
We can look at it, but I think our March water bill is full. Is that right, Dave?
It's already been mailed.
Yeah, oh, it's already been mailed, so that's another problem. So not, it won't be possible to do in the March bill.
Okay.
Just go to the website, it's great, you know, it really has every...
The May bill is possible.
All the answers are there.
Yeah.
Well, then if there's thousands of these sitting around, perhaps we can get them to other locations to...
Right, and, and we're trying to put them in all the strategic, there's some at City Hall on the desk, and, and they're going to be at the, at the event on the 28th. So we're trying to put the, not me, but the commissioner's trying to put them in, in different, all different spots. So it's, I think we're going to have it at the, I know we're going to have them at the farmer's market, so.
Oh, that'd be good. That's a great list. Very helpful. Okay. Can I just offer a clarification? There was a little concern about how we were enforcing this, and then when Speaker noted that we, Mr. Revas's statistics go back through 2018. And while we have a, a new and much more, much stricter and tailored for today's concern, fire ordinance, we have always worked with county fire and city staff and an enforcement venue also. If there's weeds or brush or a property is a hazard, I've had complaints in every spring with county fire and Pierre Revas for many, many, many years. And they've, so the, the city has always had a mechanism, nowhere near as enforced as, you know, as strict as what we do today. But you can go back and find those problem properties, and the city did have ways to deal with them, so. This is nothing new.
Thank you, that's good, good clarification. Okay, well, thank you, Pierre, for that update. So we will move on to item 15.2 with Chief Cordero, and that's our January and February fire station report. Thank you, Chief Cordero, for being here and for the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. In your report, you'll see the run statistics for January and February for Station 25, both engine and medic. I had a little bit of a timing issue on my part, that's why you've got the two months that we should be caught up for now. And both those reports are available to you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. Do councilmembers, any questions on Chief Cordero's report?
I actually had one question on the E25 monthly statistics comparisons. All of the different categories of incidents, like medical aid, traffic collision, fire, public assist, kind of, you know, some years are up, some years are down, which is what you would expect. But medical aid is just an upward trend for both of those tables, and I was wondering if you had any insight into why that was the case.
Thank you. Typically, what we see with our EMS calls, medical aid calls, countywide is about an uptick of about 100 per month. There are some months that do have some dips, but I think a lot of it is, you know, is an increased population. Sometimes, you know, during the winter times, you have some more sick calls from the flu and those type of things traveling around, and during the summer, the increase of tourism perhaps. But generally speaking, that's been about the uptick of about 100 calls countywide per month.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question, Chief, and that was on the fires, so we had, you know, 12 and 6. Do you know, are any of those illegal campfires?
The crews have responded to several campfires and illegal control burns and escape control burns of those sorts within the city, correct?
Thank you. Okay, any public, I'll open up for a public comment on this issue. All right, seeing none, I will bring it back. Any, oh, excuse me.
I just got an informal. We were talking about some distribution, oh, I'm Bill Williams. Yeah, I've talked to you before. I'm just curious to why, what I have here, I haven't filled it out. I would like you guys, you'd have this. And you going to step up?
I'm sorry, sorry, is this related to this issue of fire?
Well, for sure, when you see it. You know, I just caught me off guard when you were talking about all this, and I've had so much going on. I just thought, could I hand this to anybody up there? I'm sure you like to see it.
Sure.
You like to see everything I have. You know how hard we work at this? All right.
City Clerk, please.
Anyways, I have a copy, too. Now, you can open those, you know, we're more than happy, we're going to give them to you, okay, you can open those. Those were found in an adjacent dumpster to the post office. Now, you can take those back and look at them, you know, those really needed to go out, thousands of them. Thousands, and they were right to our attention. And there's more, there's another section that adds to do with, I take care of so many issues. Tribal health, yeah, those were also found in a different issue, in a different place. And since we've been talking about trying to get stuff out to the right people and stuff, I don't think the dumpster's the right place for that. And I think you might want to get together with maybe the boss, the chief administrator, that might be great. I can tell you who it is. But I'll let you figure that out. That's all I got to say today. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Jonathan Ganser, just a couple of comments. I think it would be good in a newspaper for even when we see people burning leaves or combustible, organic, what the ordinances are, what's, when is it after a rain? Is there a 24, 48-hour window, or what is the law on that? Would be good for the public to know. Secondly, I think it's not precise to think that people are going to go to the website or get those posters. I like the idea of, if it's not in the March water bill, the April or May even still. Thirdly, I'm not against ordinances, and they are definitely required. I think in the camping ordinance, which I'm totally opposed to because of its non-Martin-Boise adherence or flaunting, we'll talk about that later. But as far as the items in the camping ordinance that deal with fire, I'd like to see more teeth, I'd like to see financial penalties, and I'd like to see campfires eliminated in the county, and more stringent enforcement of that. That's all I have to say on that.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to council. Any final comments from anybody? Okay, thank you, Chief Cordero. Okay, we will move on to item 12.1, correct? Yes, so item 12.1, acknowledge and file the fiscal year 2019, 2020 mid-year budget, and this is a report by Mr. Warren. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The purpose of tonight's report is to answer two primary questions. One is, how is the local economy doing, and is the city living within its means? And one of the things we look at is your unemployment rates. We have the California in the blue, Eldorado County in the red, Sacramento Metropolitan Service Area in the green, and Placerville in the purple. And the good news is, is that unemployment rates continued to decline in 2019 by about one percentage point across all of the various areas. Placerville's unemployment rates continue to trend at or below the state average, which is great. And as of December 31st, California's unemployment rate was 3.7%, Eldorado County 3.1, the Sacramento ANMSA 3.2, and Placerville 3.3. Here we have Placerville's five-year unemployment rates for each month, and you can see that those rates continue to decline, actually about half of what they were about five years ago. And the 2019 unemployment rates are about as low as I've ever seen them. Again, 3.3% in December. We started the year at 4.5, so made good progress. Looking at the single-family residential real estate market in the greater Placerville area, so this is really the 95667 ZIP code, not just the city of Placerville, but the sale of single-family homes were up five months in 2019. Overall, 289 units were sold, which is nine units above the 2018 level, which is great. However, the average price, it actually rose four months out of the year, but the overall average for the 12-month period was down a little over $10,000. So we are considered in a neutral market. It's not a buyer's market, it's not a seller's market, it's just kind of in between. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Pierre Revosk to talk about our development fee trends.
Thank you very much, Dave. Okay, this graph is showing our building division activity. So if you look at that next to the last column, we were, we've, we had about approximately $71,000 came in in fees with respect to construction permitting, and then about $36,000, $37,000 with regards to plan check fees. We're anticipating, or at least we're forecasting, to have a total of $146,000 by the end of this fiscal year for construction permits. And we did put some footnotes in there, we just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that we were not including certain commercial buildings and apartments that we're actually maybe working on, but we don't expect to see those until the following fiscal year, before we realize any construction permits or plan check fees for those activities. And so for plan check fees, then, we're looking and coming in at about $83,000. I do want to add that we are starting to see sort of a little bit of a downward trend. Primarily, I think that is due to a pretty significant drop in our single-family residential permits that we issued. In fact, I think it's about, and I guess that's in a later graph, I can talk a little bit more in detail about that, but it's anywhere from 76 to an 84% drop in permitting for single-family units, and that was a major driver of a lot of our fees. So this next graph is showing issued building permits. And again, you can see we are in an upward trend when you look at the red dot in the middle of those bars. Those are the mid-years for each of the fiscal years being shown. So we were at 614 total building permits that were issued for 2018, 2019. We had 292 last fiscal year for the midterm. We were up to 322 for this current fiscal year at mid-year, but we're actually projecting a little bit of a downward trend to 575. Looking at building valuations is where you'll see quite a substantial drop in building valuations. And again, I think that's because, if you look at the very high valuations we had for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year, we had a lot of single-family homes that were being built. We had some commercial activities that were included in that. So we actually had a valuation of a little over $24 million. We're actually looking at quite a downward trend in building valuations. We're only projecting about $11, $1.5 million for the fiscal year, for this current fiscal year. In planning and zoning revenues, we're looking at basically remaining flat. So when you look at fiscal, the last fiscal year, 18, 19, we're about $11,000. We're projecting $10,000 for this current fiscal year. This graph here shows the, quite a significant decline in single-family dwellings that were being permitted. If you look at the fiscal year 2015, 2016, we had 56 units, and then we went down, we were down only 9% from 2015, 2016 to 2016, 2017. But then we saw a substantial drop at 2017, 2018. That was a 98% drop in single-family homes, mainly because Escaton built out the Ridge at Orchard Hill. They had built out, we have some other developers that were looking at some of our subdivisions that had, let's just say, withered on the vine during the Great Recession, but then were picked up by home developers. But they've pretty much built out. We saw a little bit of an increase over 2018, 2019, up to 28 units. So that was a 47% increase from 2017, 2018. But we're only projecting a total of nine single-family homes to be completed by the end of this current fiscal year, which is a 52% drop then from last fiscal year. And again, it's just the low-hanging fruit that were available have been pretty much developed. We're keeping our fingers crossed that maybe, maybe some of the other subdivisions that are still alive, that can be revived, and hopefully a home developer will pick those up. We're looking at Estonia, for example. We know, we've been trying to work with a Sacramento developer in trying to complete and finalize that map, and I think that could give us...
Where is that?
That is located, it's basically accessed if you go up Broadway to Texerna.
Oh, yes.
That would be the access point, but it's right below the airport. It's been Maspa graded already, so it's just a matter of putting in the infrastructure, finaling the map. And I think we'd have about, I think it's about 39 residential lots that could be realized by the finaling of that map. And then we have Cotton Woods 4 and 6, that would give us another, I believe, another 39 lots if we get that one finalized as well. So let's keep our fingers crossed, and we can keep the housing production going. And then the last one is showing impact fees. Again, this is commensurate with the drop in homes, dwelling units, and some of the commercial units. So you can see accordingly, the various impact fees drop as well. And that would be our traffic impact mitigation fees, our sewer CIC fees, water CIC fees, and then our park fees.
Thank you, Pierre. Now I'll hand it over to City Engineer Neves to talk about engineering fees.
Thank you, Dave. Just kind of recapping some of the fees that engineering collects as a department. We do collect, actually, all the engineering fees listed on the city's fee schedule, inclusive of encouragement permits, transportation permits, T&amp;M deposits that support those items, any kind of engineering plan check grading permits and plan check efforts, as well as some of the CIC fees and apps, as well as, they'll show on the next, or will be shown on the next slide. When we developed these projections, we actually were pretty conservative in our numbers. And so actually, there's a couple of these items that have already exceeded the projected amounts. For example, under encouragement permits, we have a projection of $30,375 in the last, just in January alone. We received about $12,000 in requests for encouragement permits from PG&E, and they actually sent in another 10 today, and another 10 are expected next week. So they're keeping us quite busy. We also, and their work is mainly tied to fire hardening of their system, as well as vegetation management, too. But both of those items do have impacts on city right-of-way and traffic access, and so traffic control and inspections of those items are necessary to make sure that everybody's complying and respecting the public right-of-way. Another item that was pretty low projected was also plan check fees. We see a couple coming down the horizon here that will also exceed that amount. And, next slide, please. Thank you. And a couple other items, too, just kind of mirroring what Director Revosk mentioned. We are indeed seeing a downward trend in development applications. However, we do still anticipate receiving the revenue shown here before you. You know, and as far as that goes, we also have a few items on this list, too, that have already exceeded the projected amounts. One in particular is actually the fines category, ironically. So we are administering our code, we are holding our healthy boundaries and permitting requirements, and so... But we do see the budget projection as shown here, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Now I'll turn it over to Director Zeller to talk about recreation program.
Thanks, Dave. The two slides that you're going to be taking a look at that represent Parks and Recreation are based on attendance and not dollars, so the numbers you see are attendance numbers. And costs, of course, are dynamic and only go one way, which is up. And so there are three things to point out in the next couple of slides. The first thing is our attendance at Gold Bug Park. You'll notice that we had a 13% drop in our daily tours. Doing some digging on that, it looks like power outages actually had a lot to do with that. But we did have some growth in our group tours, so those were up for the year. The other thing to point out is that our school summer schedule for most of our camps, when we look at special interest classes and camps, we saw quite a drop in that. But that is because the school schedule actually, most of the camps ran in June, and this shows from July on. So that's what the disparity is on this slide. And Dave, if you go to the next slide, we also have some decreases in our adult sports camps, and that was mostly caused by rain, which pushed back our start dates for the spring and the summer of that year. So all in all, they kind of bounce up and down, and this is typical of our rec programs. But there were a couple of those things I wanted to point out that were distinctive about this past year. Thanks.
Thank you, Terry. Now, moving on to sales tax, which is your most significant local economic indicator. Your Bradley Burns, which is your general fund sales tax, is the 1% of the 8.25% sales tax you pay at the counter. It represents 57.63% of your general fund revenues. And the city continues to have strong per capita sales tax. Per resident, it generates $471 in 2018. Placerville is ranked number 34 out of 539 agencies. We hope to be number one someday. The quarter ended September 2019, receipts reported down by 3.3% or $50,373 in Placerville. However, the devil's in the details. The state rolled out a new software last summer, or summer before last, and there was major adjustments in that quarter in 2018. So if you take out the adjustments, you end up with a 6.7% or $88,000 increase, which is good news. And statewide, we performed better than the state, which actually performed at 1.9%. In this information, I know you saw in a report in your previous council meeting, but I just wanted to point out a few things. The, your generators of sales tax, you can see here the types of businesses. For example, the auto and transportation, 29.56%, fairly large amount. Building construction, 16.32. The state-county pool, the county pool is continuing to grow because of online sales tax, which is where that's reported. So those are businesses that don't have a physical presence in the county, but we receive the sales tax on a proportional basis. And then you can see the other categories. But those three categories, the pool, auto transportation, and building, the biggest ones, especially when you consider this graph, which shows auto and transportation up by 5.35% after adjustments, or aberration, removing the aberrations. Unfortunately, building and construction was down 4.31, which kind of parallels with Mr. Revosk's graphs. And then when you look at the state-county pool, up 21.87%, which is mainly online sales tax, and you can see there's winners and losers in between. But overall, up. We appreciate all of our businesses in town, especially our top 25, and they're listed here just in alphabetical order. Similar a list as compared to last year this time, however, there was no restaurants on this list, and it could have been because of the PSPs that were mentioned earlier.
Hey, Dave, just one quick question.
Yeah.
If you go back a slide, actually one more, sorry. On the, what falls under, is business and industry just sort of everything else? Like small, you know, our...
Correct.
Mom and pop type?
Yeah, it's very specific, so a jewelry store, auto, not auto parts, but any specific good... Yes, Mike Cycle, for example.
Right, thank you.
Okay, looking at our... Okay, looking at our quarterly growth, um, you can see that, uh, over the years we've had some varying performance depending on what's going on. A few items I want to bring to your attention is the January to March, uh, forecast of 3.8%. That's based on the state's estimate statewide. Um, this was in January. It doesn't take into account some of the things that are going on the market, but fairly conservative. And then, um, for the second quarter in 2024, 4.2%. Um, that was up actually from 2.5 previously. So again, it doesn't take into account what's going on now, but when you look at overall, I think it's, uh, fairly, fairly conservative. So we'll keep our fingers crossed. One other thing, your, uh, fourth quarter, um, which is over there in the middle, uh, in the blue, was 11.33%. However, there was some one-time adjustments in there. If you take those out, it actually ended up being a 2.92% decrease or $38,000, $38,000 down. So we just got that information not too long ago. So when you crunch the numbers, put it all together, what you end up with, um, in fiscal year 2018, 19, your general fund sales tax, uh, totaled 5.1 million. We forecast for 19, 20, based on those assumptions, $5,423,611, or up by $289,460, which is a 5.64% increase year over year. When you look at the sales tax, um, across, this is probably the last time I'll show this, pre-recession, then you see the dip there on the left. Um, it's actually, uh, a pretty large increase. It's taken a long time. The red represents cash, what we actually received each year, and then the blue is adjusted each year for inflation. Uh, and then the green bar, uh, indicates cumulative inflation. So you can see that in 2019, 20, what's forecasted, um, is about at the 13, 14 level when you take into consideration inflation. You adopted your budget on time in June of 2019. It totaled, uh, $20,649,281. The general fund portion of that was just over 9.2 million. It included a $75,000 contingency, which is fairly lean. Um, we also assumed because we couldn't fund, uh, all of your equipment, which was a conservative list, as well as your general CIP, out of net revenues, we used, we had some good years in the past, so we took some of the, from the savings account, if you will, $111,000 and funded those one-time purchases with one-time money. Um, so that was assumed in your budget. Um, now when you look at your budget, this is a general fund dollar, and you can see that, uh, the police department gets 34 cents, community services, parks, recreation, uh, 26 cents, non-departmental debt service, the audit, uh, animal services, those kind of things, uh, 10 cents, administration, seven, public work, seven, uh, development services, six, finance, five, engineering, three, and the elected officials, a penny. So you're very affordable.
We're not even worth two cents anymore.
It's actually decreased. You're right. Last year it was two cents, so, sorry.
It's a good one, Patty.
Uh, since you adopted your budget, um, the parks division had a pickup truck that we planned on funding with fund balance last year. Um, because of other workload issues and whatnot, that was deferred. Um, and, um, and I think there was just a decision just not to purchase the vehicle at that time, but the, uh, pickup truck is now being purchased, so we had to build that in, back into your budget. So that, that comes from fund balance, so that increases that negative amount from 111 to 141,000. And then you also, uh, chose to, which was a, a good decision, uh, to appropriate $15,000 of your fund balance to explore, uh, safety facility needs. And so that's also included in your revised budget. So here we show you your revised budget. Um, total revenues, 9.1 million, expenditures, 9.1 million in your general fund, and then, uh, transfers out of 182,064. So that $157,000, it shows as a deficit, but it's a planned use of, uh, fund balance, which is inappropriate because those are one-time purchases. Your forecast, so this is where we spend a lot of time. So what we literally do, um, your, your budget team, which is all department heads and the city manager, go back and we look at our line items, we go, you know, based on what we're seeing, what do we think we're going to spend? We also look at our personnel costs, which makes up about over 70% of your budget, and we look at existing personnel, which health plan are they in? Are they going to get a merit increase? Did we hire somebody? Did we lose somebody? Uh, we look at all those costs and we crunch the numbers, and so we've done that. Um, and then we also looked at your liability claims. Uh, unfortunately, uh, we believe, I, I had a phone conference with Mr. Driscoll, and we went through all the claims. We believe that by June 30th, you'll spend about $54,000 out of your general fund just for claims. Um, so that $157,000 deficit goes to 168. Um, but again, 157,000 of that is planned use of, um, uh, fund balance. So you can see your revenues are actually up by 182,000. Expenditures, unfortunately, up by 139,000, and then transfers out, up by 54,000 because of the, uh, claims that we anticipate having to pay for. And then when you look at the long-term, um, from fiscal year 9, 10 forward, um, we actually in 18, 19 had a $34,000 surplus, which was great. Um, we actually used fund balance, we planned on using fund balance, but because of, uh, fairly significant growth in sales tax and other revenue sources and savings and expenditures, vacancies and positions, those kind of things, we actually ended up with a $34,000 surplus. But this year, again, um, as we mentioned, $168,000 deficit, part of that planned. So, um, drilling down to your revenues, you can see, we've already talked about sales tax. All other taxes are up by $47,000. That's property tax, that's your TOT, business license, all your franchise fees for PG&E, um, and Comcast. Uh, so tho- those are up $47,000 or 4.5%. Construction permits, as Mr. Revas indicated, slightly down from our original projection, uh, $9,400. Intergovernmental revenues up by about 5.44% or $52,000. That is vehicle license fees in lieu, property tax for vehicle license fees, good news there. Um, charges for services overall, we anticipate being down by $46,000, and that's primarily because of cannabis revenues being, uh, projected lower, uh, because we have no operating cannabis businesses yet. Um, fines and forfeitures up slightly due to, um, our court fines, uh, coming, uh, being projected higher. And then use of money and property, um, down slightly by $21,000 there. Um, no change in other financial, financing sources.
What is that use of money and property?
That is, um, interest, sundries, um, uh, rents, uh, so town hall, city hall.
Oh, oh.
The reason that's down is we, we book our reimbursements for workers' comp, and the good news is, we don't have any, uh, workers' comp claims that we're having to receive temporary disability reimbursements for, but on your, uh, ledger, it shows as a negative in that area. So overall though, your revenue is up by 182,666, or almost 2%. When you look at your expenditures, the police department actually is projected to have $40,000 less net, and that's primarily due to the two vacant dispatcher records technicians that are, we currently have. Those are hoped to be filled, uh, after first of the year, uh, July 1st, after July 1st. Um, development services, um, showing $106,000 over budget. This is very conservative. I was just talking to Pierre this morning, we think that may be less, but for now, we want to be conservative, have a nice surprise rather than a bad surprise. But that's, uh, because of, uh, permitting and, and, uh, we just higher contractual services, uh, costs than what we anticipated. Um, engineering, we had a pickup truck, had to have a transmission rebuilt, uh, $3,300. Um, community services actually, uh, down, um, savings of $44,000 projected, public work slightly over, uh, $23,000, road oils and, um, a few other items. And, uh, let's see, elected officials actually savings of $5,100, good job. Uh, city administration, uh, over budget slightly by $33,000. That's primarily due to net, uh, because of the, uh, receivership that's still active on Cedar Ravine and the attorney costs associated with that. We will hopefully eventually get reimbursed for that, but we don't know when. Uh, and so we're not going to book the revenue for that until we know for sure when, how much and when we're going to get that money. Um, finance, uh, slightly higher, uh, $5,200. That's because of vacation cash outs. Um, and non-departmental, uh, the 112,000 over budget is, uh, primarily because of, uh, liability claims and, um, bank fees, believe it or not. So hot being a little slightly higher. Overall expenditures, $194,000 over budget, um, as represented on the previous slide. So the numbers we're showing, you do not include any prefunding of your Gatsby 75 OPEV, full disclosure. Um, it does assume expanding the entire $75,000 contingency. Um, $168,000 forecasted deficit is primarily due to the, uh, $157,000 in planned deficit spending like we spoke about earlier. So, moving on to our, um, non-major funds, Measure J, good news. Sales tax is projected to be $20,000 higher than budget and some, uh, personnel savings, so we actually, uh, reduce our transfer out from the general fund, uh, by about $50,000. Measure H, uh, for sewer projects, uh, the sales tax is forecasted to be $38,000 more than budget, so we'll have about $51,000 more for, uh, projects for our engineering department and public works to do sewer projects. Measure L, similar trend. We project, um, Measure L sales tax being $94,000 over budget, um, and that could be applied to other, uh, road, street, um, water sewer projects. Water Enterprise Fund, uh, revenue slightly below what we anticipated, and that's primarily because of impact fees being slightly less. We could be wrong, but based on our forecast, we feel that, uh, impact fees are going to be slightly lower there. Expenditures, um, uh, $249,000 less than budget. That's primarily due to a vacant senior maintenance worker position, which we're hoping will fill next year, but, um, you end up with, uh, from a $30,000 amount set aside for projects to $265,000, so we can do more, uh, water projects with that money. Sewer, uh, we project, uh, revenues to be, uh, $49,000 above budget. Um, expenditures down, $169,000, and that's because of another vacant senior maintenance worker for the sewer system. Um, again, that position will be filled hopefully next year. Transfers out, you can see, um, uh, transfers in net, um, there's a $37,000 difference. That's because of one sewer backup claim. Um, and, uh, so we've assumed that in, in your budget. And you show a pretty large, uh, surplus, and that's because we're not showing you the, uh, capital replacement that's going to fund. So recall, you may recall your Measure H funds are transferred into your Sewer Enterprise Fund to help with your debt coverage ratio, and then we basically spend all your sewer projects out of that fund. Um, so we don't show it as an expenditure because those are capitalized. Uh, so we're, we're just, but you do have, um, a, a little over, um, $188,000 in additional monies for projects, which is great news. Parking, uh, we were a little bit too over, over optimistic in our revenue projections. Uh, we, we've, we downgraded our forecast by $36,000 for parking leased and citations. Um, expenditures, uh, slightly less, about $1,200, but in the end, you end up with before capital projects with $84,000. We've already accounted for $73,000 of that, so that leaves about $11,000 for long-term capital, uh, set aside. In addition, in your expenditures, in your contingency, there's about $10,000 for, uh, other parking projects, so. And then the non-major, uh, funds, uh, on this slide, I don't really have anything to comment on other than, let's see, nothing there. Your 2014 CH, CHP grant, that, this is the last year, so that $35,000 that helps fund a police officer position, that'll dry up at the end of this year. Um, let's see, nothing there unless there's questions, you're reserved. So in total, your operating budget, you can see revenues across all funds, uh, being $346,000 higher than budget. Expenditures, $198,000 above, actually below, excuse me, in aggregate. So before capital projects, that leaves you, uh, $3,530,003 for capital, primarily for capital projects. And just in closing, uh, the local economy has continued to improve. This is a, kind of a look back. Um, you know, there's some things happening in the market right now, uh, not necessarily on Main Street, but, you know, you, you've obviously seen what's going on in the stock market, uh, petroleum prices, of course, you know, the coronavirus that was just discussed and its impacts. We don't know what's that, what that's going to do to our Main Street, but, uh, we mean just the, the economy in general, but we're, we're optimistic, especially in California, that so far the impact's been fairly minimal, uh, hopefully throughout the United States. But, uh, the city council and management continue to operate the city in a prudent, responsible manner. Uh, we anticipate year-end operating revenues to exceed operating expenditures for most funds. Uh, staff will provide another update to the city council at your April 29th budget workshop. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dave. Excuse me, thank you, Dave, and for everyone else that contributed to this report, to the rest of the department heads, uh, I think the one slide that really stood out to me was, uh, the almost, you know, coming down to 3% on, uh, unemployment from where we were just a few years ago. I mean, you can really tell how much the economy has, has swung, uh, in the last several years, and so, you know, we have that to thank for, uh, having a healthy local economy as well, it's, which is that trend across the state. Um, but wanted to open up for any questions for staff at this point, or comments.
Just curious, where do you get our unemployment rate from? That comes from the EDD off their website. Thank you.
I have no questions, but thank you for a very thorough report.
Yes. You're welcome.
Same thing. I, I'm, I'm really kind of shocked at the building permits, um, the report that Pierre gave us on the single-family buildings, so I hope that that improves. But he's shaking his head. What's it like? Okay.
Jump right on that. Yeah, we got those 35 lots out there. We got, uh, some houses on them. Um, okay, I will open it up for public comment.
Sue Rodman, Plasterville resident. I have one question. It looks like all of the sales tax sources and stuff were for quarters ended, uh, at the end of September. And if I remember right, most of our power shut-offs from PG&E happened in October and the beginning of November, so I don't see the impact from those here. Are they there? And I just don't.
Yeah, we'll, we'll ask to, to get the answer to that.
Yeah, 'cause it's, it, there certainly was an impact to our Main Street and to all of us who lived through it and suffered through it. So I'm wondering how much it affected our economy.
Thank you.
Jennifer Chapman, Plasterville resident. I just wanted to comment that, I don't know if you looked at any of those graphs that I had sent and shared with the National Park, um, reports on visitor spending, but the big, the biggest part of the pie was hotels and ho, uh, second was restaurants. And so that was notably, I think that's the smallest thing on your revenue chart there. And, and just to bring awareness to, it's a, an economic thing that would really be very different in that scenario, um, as far as expectations. And then I guess I just, on that note, wondered if there's anything not being captured in terms of bed and breakfasts, you know, that you have that hotel category, 'cause other people have said we might not have a lot of hotels, but we have a lot of bed and breakfasts. And then that brings up the whole Airbnb question, which I don't know that we have that much of that either, but just things to think about in terms of economics.
Hi, Claire Van Damme with just a question. I was wondering about when you're projecting that the, uh, revenues from marijuana sales would happen and- happen and what the forecast is for what that will add.
Thank you for the question. Any other, okay, seeing none, I will bring it back to the council. I know we have a couple of questions here in regards to fourth quarter PG&E and the blackouts and how that may or may not have affected our, our sales tax.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the, it's, it's an interesting situation because when we got the numbers for fourth quarter, I about fell out of my chair. We actually had, on cash basis, eleven point three-three percent increase. However, that included adjustments in 2019 from previous quarters. When you take those adjustments out of the mix, you end up with a two-point-nine-two percent decrease or thirty-eight thousand dollars, which is still much, not as bad as what we thought would happen. HDL did an initial analysis, and they felt across all of your sales taxes, it would be over a hundred thousand dollars in loss. However, Cleve and I, Mr. Morris and I, met with HDL to go over our fourth quarter, or excuse me, third quarter numbers, and one of the things they said is, what they're finding is, is that the consumer's behavior changed, not just in a bad way, but sometimes in a good way. It was off, so the bad behavior was offset by good behavior. In other words, you may not have gone out and done certain things in your normal routine, however, you would go out and buy a generator, or you might buy candles or a flashlight. You're doing things, you would make purchases that you're not normally making when things like PSPSs happen. And so, the theory is, is that, and there was also, the consumer may have not bought or purchased gas or something during the PSPS, but later on, filled their tank up, or went out and, you know, bought two weeks' worth of groceries or other household items. So, there's, there's things that were happening that offset the negative impact. The one area that I saw, at least, I haven't received the detail yet of the fourth quarter, but one of the things I think we may have experiences in our restaurants, may have been affected, but in other categories, I think it may have offset at least part of that. So, anyway, good news, relatively good news overall.
Thank you for that clarification. You're right, I mean, I think we all saw it, Home Depot were the big signs outside saying we have generators here, and so there was definitely some big-ticket items that got bought up during that period, even though we all know our, a lot of our restaurants, other small businesses may have suffered during that time, but other big-ticket items that may have helped balance out, at least that fund balance, even though we did have, we definitely had people that suffered, lost during that, that period.
And the grocery stores went crazy during that period, too, you know, because those that stayed open, so.
That's true, and then you have people that lost all of their.
Then they had to go and replace it.
They're going and rebuying, they're buying a whole new refrigerator or cupboard worth of food.
Right.
But, thank you, and then we had, there was a question in terms of whether bed and breakfasts are part of that hotel.
That's a great question. So, we do collect all the bed and, active bed and breakfasts, we collect TOT tax, transient occupancy tax. The Airbnb, it's, it's a challenge because we don't always know who's operating, but we do have some that do report. We've contacted them, and they're reporting, so that's included in the mix, the ones we know of. In regards to cannabis, that's a real wild card. We forecasted this year of not receiving any operational taxes, just, we did receive some application fees and public copy, copy, people wanted copies of certain documents, and so we've booked that, but as far as actual sales, and to be quite frank, it's, it's very hard to determine at this point because of certain activities going on. So, hopefully, next year, we'll actually experience some of that. I don't know if Mr. Morris would like to comment on that?
Just, just a couple of things, yeah, I've been trying to kind of compare from other cities and where we're at, and there's actually a pretty wide range. I forget what city it was I was looking at today that I think has ten, they, they allow twenty-three, they currently have ten, but their, their revenues were way under what, what they expected, and way under what I would have expected, but I think there's differences throughout the state that, that affect that. There's another city that I've recently spoken with in, in our region, actually, that only has one, and their revenues are higher than I would have expected, so.
It's because they only have one.
And that could be, that could be.
Yeah, that density plays a part.
Yeah, yeah. In terms of, like David's saying, we're, we're not sure when that will actually happen. As you know, we're in the appeal process right now, and our city attorney is working on that, and hopefully, within the next about week or two, we will have something coming out in, in terms of where we're going with that, so.
Yeah. That may be a bit optimistic in terms of where we're going. Working on that with associate counsel, and in a week or two, we'll probably be ready to set a date for the appeal hearings and have our recommendations to the council pretty well formulated. We have ninety days to set the appeal hearing, so my anticipation is that they will be heard probably sometime during the month of April.
And I think, I mean, take all the time you need, I mean, we want to get these done right, so, even if it's, you know, we may be delayed out in terms of what we get in, this is a big change for us.
Mike, I have a question for Dave Rook, maybe you don't have the answer. How many bed and breakfasts do we have? I, I know we've had several close downs, and I'm not, I wasn't aware that we had that many left operating in the city.
Currently, boy, the, you know, I think right now, we had one, and I believe they may be inactive.
I was thinking, I keep, you know, trying to, and it seems to me that I haven't seen any.
It, it varies, so, but yeah, that, there's one not far off of Columbus Street that's operating, so.
Was it High Hill, or way, way up, the one up on, I don't know if that's still there or not. Like I say, they've all, seems like, just slowly been closing.
Yeah, now the one firehouse are all gone. Okay, any other comments from council on budget?
I'd just like to thank Dave for another excellent mid-year review, and for those of us that aren't familiar with this process, you were sitting here in March, and mid-year would be December, but that's how long it takes with our staff to get all this documentation put together, and this is early. I mean, I've seen us do this in April many times, so the, the graphics get better every year, Dave, and the numbers, we seem to be doing well with those, too, so that's appreciated, and that's very serious. I'd like to thank planning staff, their particular, their little red triangles are very useful, so we know where you were last year at the same time, very, very helpful, because we, we do know that those are very difficult projections to make, and as Mr. Rivas pointed out, all the good land's been bought and built on. So, there are very few building opportunities, so I appreciate his, his staff taking that seriously and looking at what we can do to promote single-family dwellings, because those are our bread and butter, we are supposed to be a living, working community, so that's been very important. I also want to thank Mr. Zeller for his pointing out the few little anomaly, anomalies that were present in his, his overview of our very successful recreation program, and also kudos to the engineering department for their efforts, and again, tracking their actual year, year-to-date activities, and also for your renewed enthusiasm to make sure that everybody that's out on our street and impacting our neighborhoods or our business districts is doing it with our engineering, engineering department's permission, and they're making sure that they're keeping the traveling public safe and not impacting businesses unnecessarily. That's, I fully encourage you to make sure that everybody has a permit to be on our street. I can assure you, if we were to go to some other jurisdiction, they would totally expect us to, here to every one of their whims and requirements, so great job there also. And again, that would be my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just close on, I'll just close by saying, if you look at that dollar bill and you look at the numbers at the end, I mean, you'll see that, you know, with all the dollars that come through, all the tax revenue, it is still, there's not a lot of money left over there. In fact, we had that deficit, so it is, it's always challenging for, I think, for us and for staff, when we're looking to, there are plenty of things we'd love to fund, but there are finite dollars out there, and also dollars that are appropriated for particular items that are not transferable, or as I think the term fungible, to move those dollars around. So, just want to highlight that again, just to show that, you know, we do our best to spend your tax dollars wisely, and that it is a finite pot of dollars that we get to actually do for capital projects, for, for roads, for things that are important to all of us, so just wanted to highlight that one more time. And again, Dave and the rest, and the engineer, city planner, and Mr. Zeller, thank you for all your assistance on this as well. It's great to have these numbers at this time of the year, and looking forward to continuing this budget process and knocking on wood that, you know, the revenues stay where they're at. There's a lot of uncertainties out there, stock market, coronavirus, you know, so we'll see how that plays out as we go forward here. So, again, thank you, everybody.
Well, also, I think we have to give cadews to all of our departments for the grants that they've gone after. We could not have half what we've got if it wasn't for that, that they've done a great job in obtaining for us.
Absolutely, it's true. We punch above our weight for, you know, a city of a little over, under eleven thousand people, we definitely punch above our weight in terms of the revenue and grants and other projects that we're able to accomplish, so absolutely, it's good, good to point out, Patty. Okay, so, let's see, we've moved, we've hopscotched around here on the agenda. So, we are now on to twelve point two. So, we're going to adopt a resolution authorizing the application for the receipt and infill infrastructure grant program from HCD, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute the associated grant application, and third, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute reimbursement agreement with the developer, Mallard Apartments, and to cover all those associated costs. And that item is by Mr. Rivas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just to give a little background, back on November eighth of 2016, the council adopted ordinance sixteen eighty-four, and that ordinance rezoned the subject properties that are located within the Ridge at Orchard Hill Plan Development, that's at Mallard Lane and Macintosh Drive, to include the Housing Opportunity Overlay Zone District, which changed the zoning to R3, which is multifamily, PD, Plan Development, HO, Housing Opportunity Overlay. The Housing Opportunity Overlay allows these properties to be developed for high-density, affordable housing by right, and by right means it's not discretionary, there's no hearing involved. They can come in, if they meet the standards, if they meet the SEQA conditions that were imposed, the mitigation measures, then we can issue them the building permit to construct these apartment complexes. These properties have now been recently acquired by a developer wishing to develop an affordable housing project. The development of the, of the Ridge Plan Development has off-site improvements, requirements that may otherwise make the development of affordable housing project infeasible, creating a need for financing of the off-site improvements. What's before you is the inf, what we call the Infill Infrastructure Grant, or IIG program that's offered through the state, that allows the opportunity for the developer to access these funds through the city of Placerville. The estimated off-site improvement cost is estimated as one point one million dollars. The developer of the proposed, what we're calling the Mallard Apartments, is planned, is planning on developing seventy-two units of family apartments that would be one hundred percent affordable to families earning between thirty and sixty percent of the area median income, which is about fifty-seven thousand dollars, and that's in twenty eighteen dollars. HCD Housing, that's the State Housing Community Developments, 2019 notice of funding availability, or NOFA, which you have a copy of in your staff report, announced the availability of approximately eighty-five million in funding for small jurisdictions. Small jurisdictions are defined as any county with a population of less than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand or, or city within that county. This NOFA is over the counter, and over the counter means that the, the grant applications are taken on a first-come, first-served basis, based on the availability of funds in the program. So, should the council approve the, the resolution before you, staff will proceed with the application for an IIG through the State Department of Housing and Community Development. There are no anticipated costs associated with tonight's action. The IIG grant does not include any funds for administering the grant, however, so any grant administering costs will be borne by the developer. If the IIG grant is awarded to the city, staff does plan on negotiating a reimbursement agreement with the developer on a time and materials basis. So, with that, staff is making the recommendation that the council adopt the resolution to do three things. One, authorize the application for and the receipt of the Infill Infrastructure Grant Program funds through the State Department of Housing and Community Development for the proposed Mallard Apartments. Two, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute the associated grant application, grant agreement, amendments, and any other related documents. And then, three, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a reimbursement agreement with the developer of the Mallard Apartments to cover all costs associated with administering the IIG grant. So, with that, just a couple of things, I just want to call to the council's attention, the staff report, on page one of the staff report, at the very bottom, the, under the discussion section, we state, "Staff completed a Housing Opportunity Overlay Zone District rezoning on the property on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen." I just want to correct that, just for the record, it basically was November eighth of two thousand and sixteen that your council adopted the ordinance that I already mentioned, and that's what actually rezoned the property. Lastly, I would just like to add that staff has been working closely with Mr. Chris Westlake, who was formerly with the State Housing and Community Development, and I believe he was the assistant director of that department, and he is an expert in seeking state funding opportunities for affordable housing projects, and he is here in the audience to answer any detailed questions regarding the funding application, if the council has any detailed questions that staff may find itself unable to answer. Chris is also assisting the developer, the new owner of the property, Ravi Sanwal, through this process, and Mr. Sanwal is also here tonight, if you have any questions that you want to direct towards him. So, with that, I'll conclude staff's report, and happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Great.
Thank you, Pierre. Questions?
Sure. I know in the past, we've done, like, like, where was it, Quartzmount, we did some Ella Roos bonding, and we ended up taking a bath on that one, or it was a, it was a, it was a challenging situation. Is there, are we at any risk with this, with going through this process, if, if, you know, the economy takes a downturn, this gentleman doesn't finish the project, we have funding, and some of it's been allocated, spent, and then the project doesn't go through, funding needs to be returned to the source? What, are we at risk, and are we, how, if, and how would we mitigate that?
Well, it's really hard to say what kind of risk we would be at. This is only one, one funding source that we're attempting to utilize. In fact, we're, there's another item on where this, where the city will be applying for the CDBG Community Development Block Grants to pay for the land acquisition, so with this, and with the Infill Infrastructure Grant, that the state's making available to pay for the infrastructure, for the off-site, the off-site improvements that are required to move forward the project, the developer is also looking at additional grant funding to pay for the vertical construction of the apartment, and he could probably address those fundings well, because we probably would not. Because we probably would not ever see an affordable housing apartment complex to be built in the city. In fact, I'll just add that the last time that the city saw an apartment complex built was the senior, uh, the Clay Street Senior Apartments in Cottonwood. Um, that was, what, probably over 20 years ago? That was the last time any kind of apartment complex was built. So, I think, as Governor Newsom calls himself, the, you know, the housing governor, and I think he's making a lot of funding available to do this, uh, to do these kinds of projects, to uh, meet the challenge of providing for more affordable housing, uh, you know, fortunately here for the city, but throughout the state of California. There are other funding sources. We're also looking at the REAP and the LEAP funding programs that just become available. I'm just trying to come up to speed on those.
So, I guess, I guess my question is, are we at risk?
Um, you know, that's something we have to analyze a little bit more closely once we start filling out the application, but I'm sure we would have the ability to foreclose on the property if there was default on something. But this is an app, this is a grant, so the money is being funneled through the city for eligible projects. So, uh, there wouldn't be any loss to the city. It'd be, probably be a loss to the state, but I would have to turn that over. I would hope that Mr. Chris Westlake could probably um, answer that question a little better than I can.
I can try and answer it as well. I don't see where we're gonna have any risk to our general fund as a result of this.
Quartz Mountain was because of bonding, wasn't it?
The, the, that's a totally different situation.
It was.
Bonds were, bonds were issued.
Yeah, it's not apples and oranges, but it's still an apple and I don't know.
Well, and we, it's good to ask the question.
The city didn't lose any money on the bonds, bond holders did, but the city did.
Exactly.
It was a mess.
It was a mess.
This one, it's a real cleaner, I don't know.
I, I don't see any risk to our general fund here.
All right, thank you.
Michael?
Yes?
I just wanted to kind of follow on the, along those same lines. Uh, and I don't know, this is a long, long time ago when we had sort of a situation like this when we built the, those units on Coal Springs Road. Um, those were, we got funding for those and then after so many years, uh, it reverted back to private owners and stuff. And it just seems to me that um, a lot of those that went in at that particular time, um, once it did revert back to, um, I don't know if somebody bought them or the original owner that, you know, was responsible or what, but the city got stuck for a lot of like, road improvement and stuff like that. So, is there anything built into this that um, there will be a, uh, that we're not gonna have that kind of?
Mitigations?
Yeah, and the like, um, lighting and streets and that kind of thing, is there?
Yeah, as I mentioned, this, the Mallard Apartments will be located within the, uh, the Ridge of Orchard Hill Plan Development. And so, um, if you're somewhat familiar with driving by, you've seen those single-family detached units up there. They're all part of a, and Mr. Warren maybe can chime in and help me out here, but there's a, there is a Lighting and Landscaping District that, that pays for, pays for the signage, pays for, and we also receive funding for the roads.
So, that would, this would, this proposal would be a part of, okay.
This would have to become part of that, part of that, uh, part of that assessment district.
Thank you.
If I may, just one point of clarification, um, similar to what Mr. Rivas says, there's a Benefit Assessment District, which does pay for roads, storm drains, and lighting up there.
I, I didn't, I couldn't hear you.
There's a Benefit Assessment, or what we call a BAD, which is a good thing, uh, that pays for roads.
Not a BATH?
It's an acronym for everything.
One question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Pierre, thank you very much for this. Uh, it's good to see that this project or this property is hopefully moving forward. It's laid vacant and unused for too long and it, the need in the community, as you just stated, the last project completed was almost 20 years ago. I hate to think of that because I was on the planning commission when we did that. Anyway, a question, how, how firm is this 1.1 million dollars for the estimated uh, off-site improvements?
How firm or how accurate are those?
Yes, sir.
Um, well, they were fairly recently prepared and they're based on uh, the off-site improvements that were required as part of the original approval and the environmental document prepared for the Ridge at Orchard Hill Development. So, you're looking at Curd Rudder and Sidewalk, along Green Valley Road, replacement of the Culver there at Debbie Lane. A lot of those are very, very expensive. And so, uh, we had REY actually prepare the cost estimate for this. I'm sure it'll have to be refreshed and refreshed again and again as we move forward, based on, you know, the, the increasing costs of doing these kinds of, uh, these kind of improvements. But, but it's fairly recent cost estimate and it's through an engineer that, a consulting engineer we work with and we feel that their, their figures are probably fairly accurate.
Thank you, that was all I was looking for. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, one question, what's, what kind of a timeline are we looking at here? I mean, up on the just most opti, or optimistic timeline?
Yeah, as part of our budget process, we were very curious. We, we weren't sure, you know, when we wanted to look at these, you know, the fees that are gonna come in, that they'll be associated with developing the apartment. So, um, probably the developer could answer that a little bit more succinctly than I can, but it, there isn't gonna be any, any submittal of anything as far as a building permit, probably until uh, next spring, next year.
Do we know what the timeline is on the grant application? When they would um, make announcements on the award? I think I said it was, was rolling, it's as they come in or as they spend the money down? Or is there a, a termination date on the, when the grants will be awarded?
I don't know when the termination date would be, but, but it just, the, the filing period just recently opened and Mr. Westlake was able to get that in the day of the opening. A preliminary application, if you will, uh, but, but, but it was fine. We didn't have to get the actual resolution submitted, but we will be submitting this as, as soon as it becomes available, hopefully.
Thank you.
But it's first come, first served basis, so.
Gotcha. Any other questions at this point? Okay, I'm gonna invite Mr. Westlake, if you'd like to come forward, just to make a statement and it's good to see a fellow alumnus from the Schwarzenegger administration here. Has worked with both Chris and his sister in Governor Schwarzenegger's administration. So, welcome to Placerville. It's good to see you. Oh, sorry, there you go.
Sorry. Uh, welcome, glad to be here and good to see you again, Mayor. Um, this is a, one of two projects that I'm providing some consulting on to for um, affordable housing. As I was the deputy director at HCD for about 10 years under the Schwarzenegger administration. Um, since then, I've been doing just some consulting for jurisdictions and developers around the state. These affordable housing projects are very complex to put together. Um, there's multiple layers of financing and it doesn't just happen overnight. And so, this is just like one step of it. Um, there is a ton of money that's coming through HCD right now that was passed by the voters in 2018 Prop 1. So, that's providing a lot of this money, um, like infill money, the IIG money for the offsites, because a lot of affordable projects um, have a lot of offsite costs and there's no other source that basically funds those. And so, this is very key and, and what they changed in the IIG program, because I originally designed the IIG program when I was at HCD under Prop 1C. And at that time, it was mainly designed for large jurisdictions. Um, what the governor um, came out with in this funding, that was the $95 million that was available for the small jurisdictions to kind of basically do rural projects around the state. Um, the funding did open, um, they got enough applications to close it in two and a half days. So, uh, you've got to talk about timing. Right now, they're going through all the applications to make sure they met threshold. Um, luckily, they allowed jurisdictions to be able to submit with a draft resolution, as long as there was a, a meeting within 30 days of the application deadline. So, um, we were lucky to get this in on the calendar for today so that we can submit that with the original application, original resolution, um, after we receive that um, later this week. Um, so, I'm more unhappy to answer any of the questions on the, on this project and also, we'll have the next project to discuss to you.
Great, thank you, Chris. Any questions at this point? All right, well.
I, I do have one. It says, um, families earning between 30 and 60% of uh, area median income. So, people who are earning less than that don't qualify for this type of housing, is that?
Well, there's different, it's a mix of um, um, incomes that are based on scattered throughout the one, two, and three bedroom units. So, basically, anybody, they can only earn up to a maximum of that amount. And those rents are all set by the federal government through HUD, Housing and Urban Development, um, organization. So, those rents are set by county levels throughout the state on an annual basis. So, we cannot exceed those, uh, basically, we just, we say how many units we're gonna have at a certain AMI level and then we cannot exceed that um, on the income that's coming in on the project.
So, I guess if people had housing vouchers and things like that, it could apply towards their rent?
They could, but this project has no housing vouchers in it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for public comment. If you'd state your name for the record?
Yes, sir, you're the mayor?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Drew Kent and uh, you guys are the staff members of the, this is my first time, really, honestly. I'm, I'm.
City council?
City council and uh, uh, staff members and fire ordinance, okay. Sounds good. Well, I'm Drew Kent, um, I'm an idea guy. I come up with ideas at corner markets, I'm an inventor. Um, I, I actually spent two weeks out with the, the homeless community, panhandling and doing all that kind of sort of stuff. You know, I really got down dirty and um, I, I had a full beard and everything. My wife can vouch for me, actually. So, I, so I went out there and.
Are you referring to, are you gonna comment on the, on homeless or on this particular project?
Low, low income is basically, you know, if you can't afford housing, you are low income or whatever you want to call it. So, so you have this affordable act that you're running through, somebody that was, um, ran through with the, the governator, basically. So, anyways, um, I have, I have an overall plan. You have, we have social security and we have veterans. We have two, a two-sided coin here, you know, with low income and all that sort of stuff. Well, you guys wanna fund money into something that's not gonna produce money? And I just, I, I know you, I know you guys know this, but I, and I'm not trying to knock on anybody's door and tell them they're wrong. I'm just saying, like, uh, this whole economy is built on a circuit. You know, you, you get electricity in, you get electricity out, you know? We're, we're not trying to just feed something that's gonna cost us later, like this lady was saying, because we ran into problems with lighting and all that other stuff and we had to fall back and spend more money to actually get the job done the right way the first time. So, um, like I said, um, I did an overall view over everything and I took a good look at, at uh, your guys' budget and everything like that. And um, as far as I see, I, I can see a hotel being built for, for low-income and housing for the homeless. Um, as far as caretakers and stuff like that, you could fund money back into um, uh, the, the housing that you built and uh, you have veterans as well. Well, I was thinking about having a, a hotel and you have certain levels, like he was talking about, based on your income and stuff like that. And you would have a farmland. There is so much energy out there with the homeless, it's crazy. They always want to do something. So, if we can get them in front of a farmland and get them to work as well as give them housing, I think that we could potentially build a kingdom there, just from the ground up. And it would fund that money back in to our society. If we can, if we could do a star pattern here in El Dorado, I think the um, the, the, the governor of California would definitely approve of it and we'd get it done through the whole, every state. So, then we wouldn't have a homeless problem anymore. So, I'm Drew Kent, nice to see you guys.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Peg Vanderkar, a Placerville resident. And I'm glad you moved the issues up to change the agenda, thank you. It's been a fascinating uh, evening. Uh, just a brief comment on the, this development that's proposed and I'm certainly in favor of that because we need that kind of housing too, as well as, I know what the last gentleman was talking about, we need that too. I'm thinking probably, this is a comment about what one of you said about what about people who earned less than that amount? I don't know the answer to this, but I suspect there's some, um, some supported housing uh, methods, other funding streams that can help some people get into that kind of housing. I would suggest that that be made available anyway as part of this housing development and probably the next one that's gonna be talked about too. I'm excited that you're talking about these developments. I think it's very positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I'm confused, is this just on that agenda item or is?
This is just on, on, on this particular item.
Can you just remind folks when the open public, I can't remember how the.
That, you can.
How many, how many items are there left?
There's item 12.3 and then we will move to public comments.
Hi, Steve Noe, Placerville citizen. Um, so, I'm just curious on how you guys view the ladder of coming from homelessness to, into this type of situation? Because it seemed like there was a gap that we were talking about. And then from that point onto something out, because you don't want generational citizens in this one band. You gotta be able to move them through and move them, basically, what I see is up the ladder. So, I'm just curious to, that doesn't seem like it's being addressed fully and I don't expect the answer today, because this is something that it's gonna take some lo, long-term planning that maybe this project itself does not address. But something to look at for the future is what that step ladder looks like to get them all the way out of homeless to successful citizen. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Jonathan Gainesborough, 30-year Placerville resident. Uh, a question for clarification, there was a number $57,000 as being some percentage of the medium, median income. Could you clarify, what, what was that exact line there, that comment?
We'll, we'll try to get that answer for you.
So, if $57,000 was the criteria for an applicant, that would be approximately $26 to $27 an hour for a 40-hour Monday, Friday week, work week.
I'm sure.
Whether that's affordable housing in the current realities of our county and California, really should be looked at closer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm Nicole McCoy, just recently got married, so my name hasn't changed yet. But, I'm with my husband and I wanted to make a comment on this ladies.
If you want to speak into the microphone?
I wanted to make a comment about the lady that came up about the housing who funds, um, the people that are low-income. From my experience, I've been in low-income housing before and, and currently in one now. And who funded me while I was going through my hardship was Only Kindness. They are awesome, they helped me so much and it would be a blessing for you guys to get Only Kindness involved with this situation to get people moved in and have the funding so they can be able to move into this HUD Housing District that you guys are trying to form.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further comments? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the city council. Um, I know we have one question in regards to the um, the amount somebody can make. I don't recall seeing that in there except for the, you know, there's 30 to 60% um, of the area median income. Uh, I don't know, Pierre, if you had any other comments on that? But I, I think that's the only, uh, that was the only requirement there was that they would be, uh, the families would earn 30 to 6, between 30 and 60% of the area median income.
Yeah, that figure was not, uh, contained in the staff report, but it was something I put in, in my, um, in, in my presentation. And basically, that this apartment complex is proposed to be 100% affordable to families earning between 30 and 60% of the area median income. And so, uh, we, we just, we just want to give a, a good ballpark figure. So, it's $57,353 and that's in $2,018. But I just want to give a caveat, because the speaker was sort of implying that the city had some discretion in how it defines that. That's all defined through HUD.
HUD, right, correct. HUD, right, correct.
We have no discretion on that, so that number could change when the project is fully implemented and contracts are signed and the agreements are, but anyways, that's where that number came from.
I mean, if there were, they'd be marginal changes anyways. I mean, a percentage, one way or another. We're not talking about a wild swing in, in those numbers.
Something to, to kind of ask as a follow-up to that, the $57,000 is the median income, correct?
Yes.
So we're talking about 30 to 60% of that number?
Of that.
So that's...
Yes.
And then that doesn't preclude some other governmental agency that was, through Supportive Services, helping fund their, their rent in that situation. Is that correct?
I don't believe so.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, do we have a, someone want to put forward a...
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Okay. We have a first and a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
Let me just make a, a comment if I might. Um, something that I've learned in, in the years of services, and something that has changed, and one of the speakers mentioned it, and it's critical, is you do want to have a mixed income. These used to be called affordable housing projects. That is not what they're called anymore. They're, uh, they can be called that, but I believe what we're looking at here is a mixed income. And the purpose behind that is so that there are a variety of income levels so that if you're making, um, I'll just throw a number out, $30,000, and you have a neighbor that's making $40,000, and you can see clearly how that lifestyle is better, you are incentivized to say, hey, I'm going to go out and, and go get my extra class and get my, whatever you need to improve your income. And the numbers can sway any way you, you need to think about that. But it makes, it makes good sense that you do want to have that mixed income in there so that you do have a variety of social bands, the, and the, um, the, the living experience that goes with the various incomes. So, um, I thank staff for their work on this, and, um, as the, yeah, project proponent spoke, there are a lot of hoops to jump through for this. Um, and as Mr. Rivas mentioned, um, if this project is successful, they hope to break ground next year. And so this is just, uh, one of many steps that they have to go through before they'll begin to think about even moving one shovelful of dirt out there. What, so, but that doesn't mean that I'm not really happy to see this project moving forward, so, but that, my motion stands.
Great, thank you. All right, uh, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna? I'm sorry, excuse me. Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
She ministers three months.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, item 12.3, uh, adopt a resolution authorizing the application for and receipt of the infill infrastructure grant program through HCD. Authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute the associated grant application, and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a reimbursement agreement with a developer of the Middletown Apartments to cover all costs associated with administering the grant. And again, Mr. Rivas.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, staff would like to request a five-minute recess, if that's okay.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. All right, uh, so yes, so over to Mr. Rivas. I think I already read through the, uh, resolution here. So to you, to you, Pierre.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, just to give a little background uh, in regards to the Middletown Apartments. Uh, back on February 14th of 2017, the council adopted ordinance 1687, and that ordinance rezoned the subject property that is located at the intersections of Cold Springs Road and Middletown Road to include the Housing Opportunity Overlay Zone District, which changed the zoning to commercial, uh, dash HO, housing overlay. So just so you know what it means here, because the other one was, was zoned for multifamily, this one's zoned commercial. It would allow the property owner to develop the property either or. So the way the housing overlay, um, the housing opportunity overlay zone was fashioned, because if you recall, the city was having issue trying to meet its affordable housing needs as far as re, you know, having lands available in our inventory that's, uh, could be readily available for a developer that wanted to build affordable housing. So the property owners then, that we originally subjected, a, a R5, which was a high-density zone district, were opposed to that because they felt there's no market to build, um, affordable housing at these high densities. Therefore, you're, you're condemning my property, inverse condemnation. And so we were faced with that. So this idea was developed to create a housing overlay zone so that an owner could still develop the property with the commercial-based, uh, zone district, but it has the ability to develop as a housing opportunity overlay. And the Department of Housing and Community Development was fine with that, and that's back when, if you recall, we got our housing element certified. So, um, with, with that, I just want to add that the housing opportunity overlay allows this property be developed for high-density affordable housing by right. And I do believe, and I just want to add that I believe new state laws require that, you know, the city could not preclude a developer from coming in and developing this property for affordable housing under the new state statutes. Uh, so, um, to, to move on, this property's been developed, acquired by a developer wishing to develop affordable housing. Development of this prop, uh, property will have off-site improvement requirements that may otherwise make development of the, of an affordable housing project infeasible, creating a need for financing the off-site improvements. This infill infrastructure grant program offered to the state allows the opportunity for the developer to access these funds through the city of Placerville. The estimated cost, uh, for off-site improvements at this site is $2.2 million. The developer of the proposed Middletown Apartments is planning on developing 82 units of family apartments that would be 100% affordable to families earning between 30 and 60% of the area median income. Uh, that's approximately $57,000, and that's in $2,018. Um, HCD's 2019 Notice of Funding Availability, or NOFA, announced the availability of approximately $85 million in funding for small jurisdictions. Uh, the city is classified as a small jurisdiction, meaning the population requirements. This NOFA is what we would call over-the-counter, and is on a first-gun, first-served basis, based on the availability of funds in the program. Uh, should the council approve the resolution, staff would proceed with the application for the IIG, uh, grant through the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Uh, there are no costs associated with tonight's action. The IIG grant does not include any funds for administering the grant, however. Uh, any grant administration cost would be borne by the developer. If the IIG grant is awarded to the city, staff, uh, does plan on negotiating a reimbursement agreement with the developer on a time-of-materials basis. Uh, so with that, staff is recommending that the council, uh, take the following actions. Adopt a resolution that would, one, authorizing the application for and the receipt of the infill infrastructure grant program, funding through the State Department of Housing and Community Development for the proposed Middletown Apartments. Two, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute the associated grant application, grant agreement, amendments, and any other related documents. And then, three, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a reimbursement agreement with the developer of the Middletown Apartments to cover all costs associated with administering the infill infrastructure grant. And, uh, with that one cleanup item, I would like to just direct your attention to the first page of the staff report, just as we did on the other one. Um, at the bottom of page one, under the discussion section, it states that staff completed a housing opportunity overlay zoning on the property on October 25th of 2016. It really should reference that the council adopted ordinance 1687, which was adopted on February 17th of 2017. That is when the council took action to, uh, adopt that ordinance and rezone the property. Uh, so the last thing I just want to state, as I said before, uh, we would like to add that staff has been working closely with Mr. Chris Westlake, who was deputy director of HCD, and he's an expert in seeking state funding opportunities for affordable housing, uh, projects, and we're very grateful that we have the opportunity to work with him, I'll add that. He's here to answer any detailed questions you may have in regards of the, this, uh, funding request. Uh, Chris is assisting the developer, the same developer on Mallard, and that's Mr. Robbie Sanwall through this process. And he is also here tonight to answer any questions regarding his project as well. So that concludes staff's report. Be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Pierre. Uh, any questions at this point? Patty?
I, I guess this would be the time, um, to ask this. Um, I, th, this map is horrible, by the way, and I can't read any of the street names or anything, but I think I've got it figured out. Um, uh, my concern is, and it was the same thing that when we did the overlay and we had the opposition, um, people were questioning, uh, as to a roadway, uh, if you, if we did have, and at that time, we didn't even have, um, you know, anybody talking about building there. But I still, um, have the same question as to where the road would go to, uh, enter this property and exit. Um, I have a friend, actually, who lives on Panning Way, and I do go up there every once in a while, and I'll tell you, just not so much going in, but coming out, there's just, but either way on Panning Way, um, it's just blind. And today I went up that way, and there was a kid walking to school, and, um, I had to, there was a car coming, and I had to stop because I, we were, you know, there's no sidewalks or anything up there, so... And I know that I, sidewalks are called for at a portion of this, but I'm still questioning where the road's going to, um, you know, where it's going to be on this prop, the particular development.
I'll do the best I can to answer that question. Um, it's a little more detail on the actual project itself, and we're not really there yet. Um, I would add that, that when the council adopted the resolution to rezone the property, that environmental document was prepared, uh, that addressed, uh, environmental impacts, including traffic. And so mitigation measures were adopted as part of that document, and so development of the property would have to be consistent with and implement, and, uh, would be required to then, um, address all the mitigation measures in that mitigated negative deck that, uh, your council adopted as part of that rezone. So the construction of apartment project and development of this project is by right. Uh, there is no, no further discretion, other than complying with the, the previous actions that were taken by your council. But I will add that the $2.2 million, um, off-site cost estimate is to do curb, gutter, and sidewalk on the entire frontage of the property. And so with that, that's ample, that would be appropriate mitigation for the project. So the project in and of itself isn't responsible for then doing additional, um, improvements then beyond the scope of the project, or there wouldn't be a nexus. Uh, but I know...
The, the, excuse me, uh, um, but the, I mean, the huge drainage ditch, you know, that runs down through the, um, you know, on Cold Springs, uh, right now. So would some of that property then be taken? Would the, the road be widened in there for... Because I, I mean, if you were to put it the way it is right now, sidewalks and gutters, there's no room for cars to, do cars actually to kind of, I mean, it's tight.
Well, the improvements are going to be along, um, both Middletown and Cold Springs on, on the frontage, uh, frontage of the property.
And so the road would be widened?
The road would be widened to accommodate that, to the city's standards.
Okay, well, I, and I apologize for these questions because, but I, and I probably should have come up to your office to see the map, but, um, I'm just curious, um, you know, to approving something like this, if I have the... I am really concerned about that part of it.
Well, I just want to add that your council isn't really approving the project, you're approving the funding.
I get it, but I, I, I...
The, the rezoning and the environmental document for development of the property has already been approved.
Right.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, Mr. Westlake, I don't know if you want to make any comments on this one?
Uh, my comments are going to be the same on this project. I do want to address the councilwoman's, uh, comments about the access. Um, right now, tentatively on our, just our schematics for the design of it, we do, we'll have an access on Cold Springs as well as one on Middletown. And, um, as Pierre had mentioned, we are doing complete sidewalk and retaining wall down on Cold Springs, all the way down to, basically to the light there at, um, Placerville Drive. So, um, that's why the costs are quite a bit higher on this project for the off-site improvements, uh, because all of our other utilities are on, basically on site because they're in the roadway there. Um, so that's, that would be the improvements. I do have a map, if you want to see that. I do have another one that shows the improvements, but I didn't bring enough copies for everybody.
It's okay, and I, I should have done it, my homework, uh, better than I did. But, uh, so would you have sidewalks then on Middletown, too?
Yes.
Uh, on both, both...
No, just on the property side, just, not on both sides of the road, but just on the property side. It's, it's the property that is, that Mr. Sanwall had cleared.
Uh-huh.
Before, it was very heavily overgrown.
Correct.
There was transit camps and lots of garbage and stuff in there.
Right.
After he purchased it, he went in there and cleared it.
Just clearing it has just really improved it.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, okay.
Is, is there ADA path to travel from there to the bus stop? That, and I believe there's a bus stop in front of the DMV.
There's two bus stops. There's one on DMV, and then there's also one across from Home Depot, too. So there will be ADA, uh, there'll be sidewalks improvements down there so that both accesses to both bus stops can be achieved on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, I'm going to open this up for a public comment. Just this item. Okay, seeing none, I will bring it back to city council. Further discussion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second? We have a first and a second?
Can I just make one comment?
Yes.
I'm all for both of these, but just for the public, these two projects together will equal 150 units for people making around $18,000 a year to about $32,000, um, or $36,000, which, you know, that's going to be a huge asset and resource to working families, young families that are trying to balance school and childcare, um, people transitioning out of difficult situations, and, um, service industry workers that we have a lot of in this city. So this is, this is a good thing for the community, and I'm glad to see these projects.
Thank you, Kara, for those comments, and you're absolutely right. And this is, this is 150 affordable housing units, 150. That is, that's a lot. Um, and as we mentioned before, it's been 20 years since our last apartments built here in Placerville. This is a big step forward for the city, and really for the county as well. I mean, if you look anywhere else in the county, you're not going to see 150, uh, potential units going up. So I really want to, you know, thank staff for working on this project as well. And, um, you know, as we talk, as we'll continue to talk about our homeless, uh, population and that pathway forward, you know, this is another potential, uh, leg in, in that discussion, uh, as well as the city really doing its part, um, for its community members, as well as for those, uh, looking for affordable housing. So just wanted to make those comments as well. Roll call, uh, vote, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice, Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And we are going to get back on to item number six, which is ceremonial items. We don't have any tonight. Uh, so item seven, public comments. Uh, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the city council. Uh, and just before we go into this, I just want to, uh, echo, uh, the vice mayor's comments from earlier this evening in terms of, um, all the work that's gone in so far on discussions with the county on, on how we are looking at our, at our homeless population here in Placerville and in the county. Uh, we've had, we had a really good conversations with the county. Uh, we're working towards a mid-April, uh, policy statement that would come from, uh, both the city and the county. Uh, and so we're, as we move forward on that, we're really looking, we're sort of in uncharted territory to a certain extent. Uh, the governor has made some announcements... territory to a certain extent. The governor has made some announcements in terms of new funding, as well as pieces of property, the Armory being one of those, and we've had the discussions now specifically, excuse me, on the Armory. But as the vice mayor mentioned, there's still a lot of details to be sorted out. One is, who owns the Armory? Does it, is it gonna be a lease to us? Is it a gift? The city of Plasterville does not have the keys to that Armory. It is still the property of the state of California administered by the Department of General Services. You know, if we do improvements to it, you know, what type of ownership goes into that? So there, it isn't as if tomorrow, we could go in, open it up, and welcome people into it. You know, what we can do in the private sector is not necessarily the same things that we can do as a public entity. And so I just want to put that out there, is that we are, we are working on this. We are trying to align all the different funding streams that are out there, so that we're working on this as one entity going forward. It's a little bit challenging, but I know in our community, thankfully, we're nimble enough to, we can be able to do that. And the vice mayor has been very good about staying on top of that, and really, you know, making sure that we're all aligned and going in the right direction. So thank you, vice mayor, for all those efforts on that part. But I just wanted to kind of set the framework here. I know we've had discussions during public comments on this issue, so I just kind of wanted to set that stage, so as, if we have folks making comments on this issue, that just kind of gives you at least a state of the state of where we are currently at this moment. Then, if I may, I wanted to ask the chief, just to make some brief comments on, I know we had some questions at our last council meeting regarding the enforcement of our new camping ordinance, and just how to, kind of how we're going forward at this point. So just, Chief Ortega, if you will, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we had some discussion at the last council meeting. My staff has developed some guidelines that we're gonna follow, that will outline how the ordinance is enforced. It's gonna be first through engagement, then advisement, before enforcement. As I've said many times, we're not here to arrest the homeless or criminalize being homeless, but we are here to make sure that all of our citizens are safe, and that they're well informed as to what the camping ordinance states, and how it will be enforced. So they gave me a draft this afternoon that I haven't really read yet. I was gonna give that to Mr. Driscoll sometime this week to look over, and Cleve can, Mr. Morris can look at it when he comes back. But we should be ready to go within, I'd say, a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Morris.
Mayor, just before you go to oral comments, we do have one written comment that I wanted to provide to you, and maybe we're gonna get to that. This is, you recall last, approximately November, we met, at the time Mayor Acuna and I met with Sacramento Municipal Utilities District to explore the option of them annexing this area into their district, which would allow us to be served by SMUD rather than PG&E. We did that. At the time, we had a good meeting, a good conversation. They agreed to provide us a letter, kind of answering that request and seeing where we would go. And so this letter that you have tonight provides that, that answer. Just wanted to summarize a couple of things that came as a part of that. In short, they don't really advise that it could happen. Not, not that it legally could happen, but they don't see it as good business sense for SMUD. And they refer to other annexations that were attempted in Yolo County back in 2006, and the extreme difficult time they had with that. And that was one where they did see a benefit for SMUD and for Yolo County, if that were to happen. Wanted to read this final sentence that they have in here. It says, "Accordingly, we cannot state with confidence that SMUD's annexation of El Dorado County would provide benefits to both SMUD and, SMUD customers and residents of El Dorado County, and therefore cannot reasonably recommend that our board proceed with a joint study of annexation feasibility." So I think that, I wanted to get that to you. So it's been a while since that happened, and want to let you know that we hadn't given up on it, and we did get that letter back. That kind of answers our question of the feasibility of us being annexed into SMUD's utility district.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Cleve. Yes. First of all, first, let me thank Cleve, and Don Ashton, and Supervisor Veerkamp for also attending that meeting, setting that up. I think we actually got, you know, the golden meeting that everybody was looking for with the general manager of SMUD. And we also have probably the letter that everybody is looking, was looking for, thankful, thanks to his efforts and our efforts. But it'd be appropriate to consider this for an agenda item, so that the public could see. And I would also like to send a thank you note to SMUD, because it obviously took quite a bit of effort to put this together and take a 10 to 15-year process, 10 to 15-year process, and condense it down to five, five pages.
I think so. I think if we bring it up on a future agenda item-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. I think that, that makes sense for what we've all gone through, to have a more thorough discussion on that. And thank you, Mr. Morris, for bringing that forward. So now we will go to oral communication, item 7.2. So any member of the public that wishes to address the council on a non-agenda item.
Three minutes.
And three minutes.
I've had a request from Maureen Dion Perry, who, she says, "I'm home with the sniffles and allergies, who knows which, so I didn't want to come tonight." She asked me if I could read this for her, and then I would like a little bit of time myself.
Sure.
Okay, so here I am, channeling Maureen. "Hello, City Council and staff. I'm home with the sniffles, allergies, who knows which, so I don't want to come tonight. Thank you for allowing Claire to speak my words. I want to thank Vice Mayor Dennis, Councilwoman Cara, City Manager Cleve, for taking the time to go on the 14 Forward Transitional Housing Field Trip and attend our town hall this past Sunday. After your last meeting and our comments, I want to let you know that we are not singling out the City Council for special attention on issues of homelessness and affordable workforce housing. We are spreading our comments to the County Board of Supervisors and the Continuum of Care. We know that in order to achieve our goals to reduce homelessness and increase workforce housing in our community, we all need to make a firm commitment to work together. No one can do it alone. We were very happy to hear that Don Simone, Director of County Health and Human Services, supports taking action on parallel paths, one, to keep working on the strategic plan, and two, take action now. We look forward to collaborating with you and the county to pursue immediate opportunities with the Armory and a possible tiny house village for transitional supportive housing and anything else that we can come up with. Question, now that we know that the Fairgrounds doesn't have claim to the Armory, has the city formally requested use of the Armory? I would like to request a list of surplus city property to get familiar with options. In closing, we want to thank you and work with you to help solve the complex interrelated problems to decrease homelessness and increase affordable workforce housing in our community." And I may not have identified it. Maureen Dion Perry is with the Western Slope Coalition on Affordable Housing and Homelessness.
Thank you.
Okay, and now to proceed with my comments. I'm not gonna repeat things that have already been discussed here numerous times, but with respect to the ordinance, I'm here to ask for three things today. The first is that you suspend the enforcement of the no camping ordinance as to open space camping while you're working to identify and implement shelter and transitional housing solutions. So going forward, no more citations. I'm also asking for the same, same ordinance enforcement suspension as to the ordinance's prohibition on sleeping in vehicles, and that particularly affects a lot of times families with children. And lastly, I'm asking that you dismiss, or at least continue, but preferably dismiss, the existing no camp, no camping trespass citations, so that the homeless are not prosecuted, while the city and the county work to identify safe camping locations and parking locations. Let's not criminalize the homeless. I know there was a comment, comment that you're not, but merely engaging in dialogue first and then citing them is still citing them for being homeless. I expressed previously my view that I don't believe that the, while the ordinance on paper says, while there's beds available, shelter beds available, there will be no enforcement, but in fact, there are not adequate shelter beds available, and there's no checking to make sure that anybody could enter into a shelter. And people were cited on nights that no shelter was available Tuesdays and Wednesdays. So the reason I bring this up is that I believe that my requests are in the best interests of the city and all of its citizens, including avoidance of unnecessary and costly legal proceedings, and that by proceeding to enforce the criminal part of it, if you go forward with that, I think that you are exposing the city to some significant legal expense. It was mentioned by others at the last meeting, not by myself, but by others, that there are people who are watching what's going on. So I want to thank everyone for the time that you're putting in on all of this and moving forward on it. I think it's very exciting and wonderful, and this is a very difficult and complex issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is Cheryl Trainer. I moved to the county 30 years ago to work with a community nonprofit that worked with children and families who had children with disabilities. And I worked part of that time in the city, and now I'm here as a, both as a therapist and as a volunteer with a nomadic shelter. And I'd like to just speak to the idea that in the 18, 1980s, the government at that time closed all the state hospitals, and there really hasn't been a permanent solution. As you said, this is a multifaceted need. It's not just homelessness, but I'm gonna bring up the concept of mental illness. Having had some of that in my own family, and knowing if you have a family, they can help you to get the resources you need, then it's a possibility. And if you look at NAMI statistics, the National Alliance for Mentally Ill, one in four people will experience some sort of mental illness. So it's not just somebody from another community, it's in our community. And I think that part of the issue that we're seeing is we don't have a good system of housing and shelter for this population, as well as some county services. Therapy is for groups, we need more than that. I realize this is a different issue, but I think having some sort of a transitional housing that can do case management and help people find the resources they need, if it is available in the county, is a first step. And so as you're looking at the Armory or other places in the county, I just ask you to consider this, that this is the reason I came to this county, is I felt this was a county that supported families and supported the community behind what the needs are. And this is a need in our community. It's a very significant need, and often people with mental health issues will resort to substances that are illegal to appease their pain. So I'm, I'm asking for you, as you're, as you're looking at the possibilities for the Armory, as you're looking at, I know that it costs money. I'm not trying to say this is an easy problem, but there may be some other monies available for the services. We need the permits. I know we've had other options in this county, and they've been closed down because the permits have not been continued. And I, and I just feel like that we have it in this community to do this. I also would invite you, there's a wonderful movie, it's a documentary that was made in France, called Les Invisibles, and I don't know how to say French, I know how to speak Spanish, but it means the invisible. And it's essentially a documentary about a real community center in France that worked with a women's shelter, and they had real people that were in this shelter speak. They had the social worker that worked with the community speak. And it's, it's both poignant and humorous, and I think it gives a vision for something that we don't yet have here, but could. I mean, I've visited different communities that have intentional communities for people with disabilities, and I just feel like there's some other options out there. And I just ask you to look into what is realistic from our community that could be a point of entry for these situations. And I know from when I worked as a home visitor at this nonprofit with these families that had children with disabilities, they came to us not knowing what the resources were, and some of those were single parents, and I'm done. But all I can say is I needed somebody to walk alongside them, and that's what I hope we will do. Thank you very much for your-
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Clay Street. I guess I just, you know, I appreciate this dialogue is a lot about human, you know, human condition and human things, and I just think this thing that happened in the newspaper says a lot about, you know, how we, how we interface with each other. And I think you guys, you know, you were quoted, a lot of people were quoted, and I just think it's reflective. But you have Mr. Clarici referring to me and people that I work with in the community as protectors, and so by definition, he's setting up, you know, another group of people that are the destroyers. And I just want to say, I think it's unfortunate, and hopefully, but I'm still optimistic. I went to the Druids meeting last night, amazing group of people. This is an international group. They're a lot about assistance and volunteerism and, and, and community contributions. I just want to say that the letter, that some of Jackie Know's points, which, you know, I will give you a whole written response, but I just want to highlight a couple of things. Her request for a letter of intent from the National Park Service, this is misunderstanding. The National Park Service does not create parks. They don't advocate, they don't lobby. They're the executive branch. Congress creates parks. The National Park Service manages parks. Congress represents the people. The people ultimately create the parks through their congressional representatives. The National Park Service can do an initial reconnaissance survey if requested by a member of Congress and accepted by the National Park Service Director. Again, I'll give it to you in writing. Saying there's no path or no plan, this is a starting point of a vision, but I did very clearly talk about, this is a road that has been traveled by other communities, and I gave two examples of partnership parks with very little federal government ownership, the city or involvement. The city of Richmond created the Rosie the Riveter World War II Home Front recently, and National Historical Park, and the community of its Calumet in Houghton County, Michigan, created Kinnawha National Historical Park, which is about the copper mining industry, and really a whole amazing geological resource. Today, I met with someone who is a geologist locally, who knows a lot about this area, who's speaking at the Gem and Mineral Society next Thursday night, and, and is actually interested in being part of a group that will look at the geological part of this story. As far as traffic, I told you that the city of Mill Valley is a city, by the way, it's a city that started as a logging town, Mill Valley, and it has to deal with the traffic associated with Muir Woods National Monument, which is, again, an international destination. They have a traffic plan, they have a bus shuttles, they have parking reservations, and it's managed. And they have unincorporated rural communities that, you know, had the same kinds of concerns. The Plasterville and Sacramento Valley Railroad is the other resource that we have that is already interested in heritage tourism and, and bringing people, you know, as a service-
Jennifer, did you wrap up your comments?
On the historic corridor. And then as far as the interpretive trail, I don't know why the Friends of El Dorado Trail isn't interested in Jackie's idea about exhibits, but more on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, council members, I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice tonight.
No problem, it's going around.
My goal tonight is to be as positive as I possibly can. I find that I have been negative in the past in many areas, but I sense a new breath of fresh air coming from your involvement with issues around homelessness, regarding the Armory. All of these things are very positive. I may not always agree with the law enforcement operation, but I understand that Chief Ortega has to follow the direction of the council. But overall, I'm very pleased, and I'd like to make a comment about a recent incident we had at the nomadic shelter, where we had a mental illness issue that was beyond the capability of the volunteer staff to deal with. Called the police department, they arrived rapidly, they were courteous, polite, professional, and did an excellent job in dealing with this situation, and I thank the police department for that. Regarding the, this new fresh, fresh air perspective, the, and the use possibly of the Armory. The Armory is a structure, it is a large structure. It was very adequate for the Boys and Girls Club. I believe it would be adequate for sheltering homeless. The governor, as I understand the directive, and I don't have the exact wording of it, is basically saying that these facilities would be made available for homeless facilities and, and low-cost housing facilities. And but just by that action, I believe that the ownership would have to fall, or the operation responsibilities would have to fall on a, a public entity such as, as the city. So again, being as positive as I can, thank you for all of your work relative to homelessness. So, again, being as positive as I can, thank you for all of your work relative to homelessness.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Steve Nell, Placerville citizen. So, I just happened to be watching on TV and ran back. So, as a guy that goes up and down the trail and actually cleans up after homeless people, it's a pain, it really is. I mean, right now, currently, up on the upper section between Ray Lawyer and Main Street, or Broadway, whatever it is right there, there's two camps, there's a red cylinder of some type of gas that's not propane, some other chemical, and there's a lot more problems. The camps are actually on the right-of-way for the freeway, but it's, that's a constant place because it's a big, flat area that there's no vegetation. So, and then there's the garbage on the other side of the fence, on the trail side, that includes a pretty large plastic pallet, how they got it up there, I don't know, but they do, they're inventive, and it's constant. Even in the city section, we have a couple of piles. I personally have hauled away probably 12 yards of junk, and tissues and human feces and the whole nine yards. And speaking for the homeowners of this city, it's got to be addressed as well, because we already tried this once with the Hangtown Haven, and it was a nightmare for the people up on the streets around that area. And even for the people that weren't in the Hangtown, when we announced it over the TV, which is, this is going out to them, we had people as far away as LA camping out here. So it's got to be controlled in some way. So, there's, you know, it's pretty bad. So, this is the realities, I can hear some comments behind me, but that's the reality of it. I'm the guy that picks it up. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? See none.
Mayor, before my time starts, I'd just like to commend the council for seeing the value of the lighted candle and helping with some vouchers in that direction for the wonderful picking up that they're doing to benefit the entire county and the city. So, with that, the clock can start. Mayor and Council Jonathan Gainsborough, 30 years.
It's started already, but.
Yeah. We're all tired. We all saw the headline, it's a disgrace, it couldn't be any clearer, it's that the, there's a homeless problem that's gotten out of hand, out of control. Tonight, the homeless are out there, there's 612 homeless, Tuesday night and Wednesday night. I appreciate the compassion that is rising in the city council and in the leadership here. The Nomadic Shelter is closing at the end of the month. The city ordinance says that they cannot camp anywhere on public property as long as there is shelter. Two of the seven nights all through the winter, there's been no shelter. The Nomadic Shelter is closing, is coming to an end. The city of Placerville will not have the Nomadic Shelter, it seems, there's talk this next fall. Now, $700,000 or $850,000 of state money must be spent by June of 2021. I want to be proud of Placerville, but currently NPR is talking about us. Fox 40 is looking forward to either the citations being canceled March 30th, or coming up here to film a disgraceful criminalizing of the homeless by this anti-camping ordinance. I'm asking that the anti-camping ordinance be put to sleep for now. I'm willing to meet, my legal team is willing to meet with John and your leaders. I don't want to bring Marc Maron in, but I've spoken with him for 20 minutes. You cannot afford the cost of a civil rights lawsuit flaunting the Martin-Boise decision. Now, I see movement toward a shelter, but why is it we have a brand-new animal shelter? And Cleve, I'm glad that you went to the 14 Forward, and I appreciate your effort at that. Why is it we have a brand-new animal shelter, but no shelter for 612 precious, valuable human beings? It's going to snow this Saturday, Sunday, or Monday, according to the 10-day forecast. 612 El Dorado County homeless will have no shelter. They're out there tonight in the cold, and it's cold. Jesus said, "I was hungry." Jesus Christ said, "I was thirsty." Now, you've been thirsty, I've been thirsty, we've been hungry, but Jesus Christ was homeless.
Can you wrap up, Mr. Jonathan?
Yes, Jesus Christ was homeless, and He said, "I was homeless, and you either gave me shelter, or you gave me no shelter." Please, let's open a shelter, let's do what it takes. Leaders lead from in front, and you're moving that direction. Thank you, and God bless you.
Any further comments? See none. Go ahead and close public comments. We just, I don't know if it's Cleve or the chief, just on a clarification on those original citations that were issued. I believe those were dismissed, or we've.
They're being held and will be reviewed later by us in the district attorney's office. Right now, they're not moving forward.
Gotcha. So there's no date for somebody to appear. Gotcha. Bye, Mayor.
One more thing. Let's see, it was Cheryl that was asking, was talking about the mentally ill. I would encourage you to speak with and look for a meeting with the COC on strategic planning as they are developing the plan, and that would be a great place for you to also address your issues there.
With the county.
Yeah, with the COC.
She might not know it. She knows, yes.
Yeah, and I would just echo, I mean, I know there were some comments about mental health facilities as well, and absolutely, I mean, we're not going to solve the mental health issue here in El Dorado County. You know, there's been facilities all across the state from the 80s on, I remember Lattimer closing where I grew up in their 2000s, early 2000s. The reality is, we need state facilities throughout California in order to be able to do this. This is going to be a job of the legislature and the governor. I was disappointed that those issues weren't raised either by, you know, the task force, but just like we've had a special master overseeing our corrections department for the last 15 years, we need probably something similar when it comes to the mental health side. Our current DMH facilities have no room, they're at capacity, we mostly have sexually violent predators in there now, when they leave prison, they go over to the DMH facilities. But we could use at least two, probably multi-thousand-bed units throughout the state. That is a much larger conversation that we have to have as a state. We're one small speck in this entire conversation about where we want to prioritize our money and how we want to do that, and I would encourage everybody to contact their legislators about that as well. I've certainly brought this up before, and I've brought it up to Assemblyman Bigelow and Senator Dolly, our two representatives for El Dorado County. They're both Republicans in a very, very blue legislature, so their voices are heard, but maybe not heard as much. And so places that are representative by the majority party certainly have an ability to get that point across a little bit more as well. We'll certainly do our part on that. But it's a statewide, that is a statewide problem that will have to be fixed at the state level, to have those 24-by-7 mental health facilities. We will do our part with the monies that come through here and what we can do, but really, it's, no matter what we spend, it's going to be a Band-Aid for what has to be done, probably at a much greater level. And so just wanted to put those comments out there as well. I appreciate everybody that's come out tonight to speak on this issue. More to come, as we mentioned before, we're working through this process. This isn't one, I think there was a question about, you know, have we asked for the Armory? The reality is, we don't even know whose, the state still owns the Armory, we don't know whose responsibility that would be yet, we're working through those issues. It's one of many potential, well, there's one of, it's a good potential spot, and we're looking at other locations as well, because we have to take all things into consideration. So those things will be coming forward. And as I mentioned, about mid-April, we're looking at the, around April 14th, to have sort of a joint policy statement from both the county and the city. And there was also, I wanted to just, one more comment here, we had, you know, it often goes unsaid, for people that show up here, we had one homeowner come, we also have to take into account every single homeowner, every single business owner that's here as well, and balance those needs, as well as our homeless population. And so we're trying our best, an attempt, to balance those two things, and just because we don't have, you know, thousands of residents showing up here to talk about, you know, from the people I've spoken to, I know my colleagues, excuse me, there's a lot of concern about what we're doing in order to protect their safety, as well as the value of their homes and to enjoy public spaces. And so all those things have to be counterbalanced with what we're trying to do as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, offer a couple of comments? Because some of these, some of the reoccurring themes are, in my mind, hurtful or disrespectful. We hear repeatedly Mr. Gainsborough, again, in his comments this evening, we're very clearly threats of who he's going to call and who will be here and who will show up. So noted, thank you very much. We have an obligation to 10,000 citizens, and we will have whoever shows up, show up. The idea that the mental health issue somehow has not been recognized by either myself or other members of this council, I can't imagine that. I've recognized it for over 20 years, that closing the state mental hospitals was a huge mistake, and until we can provide secure mental health housing and facilities with fully-trained staff and all the medications and security that needs to happen, a little city like Placerville can't provide that. You saw Mr. Warren's dollar up here, we call it Dave's dollar. You didn't see any slot in there that said "social services," you didn't see any slot in there that said "mental health services." We have never in the history of the city provided that. Mr. Vandecar has always been a very honest advocate, and I admire his longstanding support for the homeless community. It was his comments a couple of meetings ago that got me to thinking about what services does the city provide for the homeless? And as I mentioned at the last meeting, with some grumbling from the homeless advocates that were in attendance that night, the city does provide fire services for a couple of million dollars a year. The city does provide a police force at the cost of over $3 million a year. We also provide building services that ensure the safety of all the citizens. If we could remove any one of those costs from our annual budget, then we could very much look into providing the staff and a facility that would be maybe equal to what the state could provide. But until we can get something to take those responsibilities off of our plate, or off of Dave's dollar, it has never been our charge to provide those kinds of services. And so I appreciate Don's comments. I also noticed that he was quite honest to say that his volunteers at one of the shelters was overwhelmed by the mental challenges that one of the guests that night presented. They called the police department. And I appreciate you sharing that with us, Mr. Vandecar, because that goes to prove that even the volunteers are afraid. I have, we have a resident here this evening that took time to run back down and described a little bit about what he has seen, why a homeless person would need to drag a heavy plastic pallet up on our trail, is probably an example of the mental health services that are lacking. For myself, I can share with you that my family suffers from a long history of deep depression issues, and I'm very familiar with mental health issues. I don't need anybody to come to a city council meeting and remind me of that challenge. So, moving forward, you know, I appreciate the enthusiasm and the new energy of my new colleagues up here at the dais, perhaps I've been here too long to just know the dollars don't exist. The state of California and the federal government need to step up and solve this problem, and the folks need to realize that we have 10 times the advocates from the residents of this city that do expect our police department to write those citations, that do expect the fire chief to make sure that we don't have illegal campgrounds, and we will continue to do the best we can, but you have to realize that there are vendors and services that will have nothing to do with helping the homeless, because it has cost them so many dollars and damaged equipment and goods. We can't get restrooms. At one time, I knew we couldn't, at least, they didn't want them destroyed by the homeless people. How do we provide services? And why did the folks do that? Goes back to the mental health issue. Understand it, vicious circle. Unfortunately, I don't have the golden answer, but please don't try and picture, portray me as someone who is not familiar with the challenges that that population faces, and still throws by St. Patrick's Church every day and sees a multimillion-dollar facility locked up tighter than a drum, and it is not open tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we will move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote, unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Do we have any comments on, will we make a motion?
I'll move, approval.
Second.
Seconds, we have a first and a second. Any public comments on the consent calendar?
You hear come Sue.
Sue Rodman, lover of the city of Placerville and where I live, and I would like to say that item 8.7, to approve the agreements with the more rehabilitation enterprises for janitorial and watering services and our lovely water, our plant.
Flower Bast.
Flower Bast is on Main Street. What a great thing to do. I think that's a much, a very good use of the money that we are spending here. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Any further public comments on the consent? See none. We have a first and second, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Sargosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And now we jump back to item 12.4. Adopt a resolution authorizing the application for and receipt of the Community Development Block Grant Program through the State Department of Housing and Community Development for land acquisition of affordable housing project sites for the Middletown Apartments and the Mallard Apartments, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a CDBG grant agreement, any subsequent amendments, and funding requests for said affordable housing projects. And again, Mr. Rivas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This request is in regards to the same Mallard and Middletown apartment projects you heard earlier. So the Mallard and Middletown apartment project sites have been rezoned to include the Housing Opportunity Overlay Zone back in November of 2016 and in February of 2017, respectively. The project sites are shown in Attachment 2 of your staff report, and my apologies for the lack of clarity in those site maps. The Housing Opportunity Overlay Zone allows for these properties to be developed for high-density, affordable housing by right. The California Department of Housing and Community Development have announced the availability of approximately $60 million in funding for, through the Community Development Block Grant Program through a NOFA, a Notice of Funding Availability dated January 21st of 2020, that is also an attachment to your staff report. Staff will complete the CDBG application for land acquisition to support these two affordable housing developments. If awarded, the city would receive. If awarded, the city would receive the grant, which would then be provided by the city as a loan to the developer to fund the land acquisition. The loan amount will allow the developer to proceed ahead with other funding applications, and be able to show a higher leverage needed to be competitive on a statewide basis. The loan term would be 55 years, interest only, at 3% per annum, no principal payments to be made. The interest payments would be program income, which the city could then use for other qualified eligible projects in the future. Should the council approve the resolution, staff will proceed with the applications for the Community Development Block Grant funding through the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Please note that the CDBG funding, program funding, is federal money that is administered through the state HCD. The city is requesting approximately $1.6 million, that's itemized as follows, and that would be $820,000 for properties acquisition for the Middletown project, $720,000 for property acquisition for the Mallard property project. And then there are, the city is allowed to utilize up to 7% of those funding for general administration, so that's, that's approximately $107,000 for a total request of $1.6 million. So, in closing, staff is recommending that the council take, adopt the resolution to take the following actions. One, authorize the application for and the receipt of Community Development Block Grant Program funds through the State Department of Housing and Community Development for land acquisition of affordable housing project sites for the Middletown Apartments and the Mallard Apartments, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same. And two, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute CDBG grant agreement, any subsequent amendments, and funding requests for the said affordable housing projects. And with that, I would just like to add that we've, we've been working with Mr. Chris Westlake, who was formerly with state HCD, and expert in seeking these funding for this affordable housing project. He's here to answer any detailed questions the council may have. And also here is the developer, Robbie Samwoll, who we've been working with through this process as well, and he's also here tonight. That concludes staff's report, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Pierre. Any questions for Pierre? Vice Mayor?
Is the loan forgiven after the 55 years, the principal payment? Or is that, I mean, what happens at the end of 55 years?
The money rests with the city, it's my understanding, it'll rest with the city to pursue other, other affordable housing projects that are eligible?
But that's only the interest portion.
What happens to the principal?
It's forgiven, correct, Chris?
I, sorry, Chris answered it.
We'll find out.
We'll have Chris come up.
More to council, city.
We'll get clarification. Good question.
Yes.
Good evening. So the loan would be structured as a 55-year loan, interest only, paid by residual receipts from the project. So typically on these projects, when these loans are structured, they're renewed at the end of the 55 years, because I know when I was at State Department of Housing, we had old loans made on thousands of projects around the state. And when they come to their due date, it's renewed because they want to keep the housing stock as affordable. A lot of these projects will be resyndicated, which means they'll get new tax credits in about year 12 to 15, after the project's been built. A lot of those, like the city loans and stuff, will be refinanced at that time, so a lot of times, they could be paid off during that time. So, there's an affordability period that stays on the project for 55 years, more than likely, the loan would be paid off before the 55-year term, under one of the resyndication period times.
And the money goes?
The money would go back to the city, because since it's through the Community Development Block Grant Program, any money you receive back, because you're receiving it as a grant from the state, which is receiving it as a pass-through from HUD. So that money, any paybacks you get, like you've, in the past, if you had any housing rehab or down payment assistance programs, any money that was paid back on any of those loans, the principal side of it, that went into your program income, then, as Pierre said, then you could put that back out for CDBG activities.
So it's earmarked, basically? Okay, good.
Right.
Thank you.
And just, I don't know if you want a little background, but this is, as we talked before, some of the layering of the financing to strengthen the project for the leverage side of it. This application, we, the developer still has to do a NEPA on this before we can even do the application, so it was, it's still at least a 90-day period out there. These funds through the Community Development Block Grant Program are on a first-come, first-served basis, so they may or they may not be available at the time that the NEPA's done. The good thing is, the NEPA's are good for five years, so this funding is on an annual basis, and so if the funds run out in the next few months, there will be another NOFA released in January of next year again. So then, we would be relooking at that, at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have other questions for Mr. Wesley?
I've got a couple of questions, I'm not sure if it's for Mr. Wesley or for Pierre, but just to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly, so the city would get the principal amount through the Community Development Block Grant, we would give that to the developer, the city would then get paid interest for 55 years, and that interest would become program revenue that we could use for eligible projects. What would be considered an eligible project that we could use those funds for?
Well, the city at one time in the past has a, had a housing rehab program, so that was a direct benefit to a beneficiary, so the individual homeowner or recipient would have to qualify based on their income. But it could be a whole variety of different programs, for example, maybe the city can then provide another loan for another affordable housing project, or something of that nature, but it would be a whole variety of eligible projects under the CDBG to benefit low and very low-income persons. Because they have housing programs, there's economic development loans that you can do, you can do public services, you talked about some of the service dollars that you were talking about, maybe for homeless programs, you could fund that with CDBG funds. There's a wide variety of programs that are eligible. The primary concern, though, is that you make sure that the recipients of the funds, either on a home buy, or through the program, are income-eligible for it.
Okay.
And then that's basically 60%, of area median income and below.
Okay, thank you. And then, one more question, and this is kind of similar to the question that Vice Mayor Thomas asked on the previous agenda item involving these projects, but you mentioned that the interest would be paid through the proceeds of the apartment building, but in the event that something fell through with the project, and we have already gotten the money from the Community Development Block Grant and given it to the developer, what would happen to the city?
Well, when we talk about the interest payments are residual receipts, and that, what that means is, after all the, all the operating expenses and the income that comes in, because these projects are basically designed to be very neutral cash on them, because that's the only way that they'd be able to keep their rents at the levels that are set by HUD. And these projects, we're looking at $23 to $27 million on each project. They have a very small permanent loan from a, from a bank, the rest of it is either tax credits, or all this other soft money that we've been talking about tonight, like the IIG program, there's the multifamily housing program, there's a variety of different programs, and we've got to put that all together. So, the interest payments may or may not happen, but it depends on the project, on their operating expenses and incomes that come in on an annual basis. So some years, you may not have an interest payment, some years you do. But this is money that, the principal money comes directly from, through HUD, through HCD, to the city, because that's only eligible applicants are cities and counties that don't receive a direct allocation from HUD. Go back to your point, though, that, what the vice mayor talked about, what happens if you do this? These, basically, they're set up as a loan. So there would be a loan on the property, secured against the property, so it'd be a grant deed, so if the project was never developed into affordable housing for like the CBG program, then the city has the option to call that note if it doesn't, if it doesn't materialize. On the IIG program, those are grants from the state to do the off-site improvements. The only way that that could ever become a liability would be if, to be paid back is if the affordable housing is never built. Giving an example, when I was the deputy director at the state, we funded the rail yards downtown Sacramento, $70 million to do the infrastructure there. They've never built affordable housing yet, and that money went in and did all the improvement work that you see there in the rail yards. So, the goal from HCD is never to foreclose or go after anything, it's, it's to promote and encourage more affordable housing stock out there. So they'll work with the developers, they'll work with the cities to get that affordable housing, because they know it'll eventually get there, because there's a covenant on there. So, a market rate developer, if we, say for example, on the Middletown property, 2.1 million, if you get, if we were able to get the money awarded for that, and do that off-site improvements, an affordable developer, I mean, a market rate developer could never come in and take over that project if we couldn't do it affordable, because there's a 55-year covenant that the state HCD puts onto that property, based upon those AMI levels and the bedroom counts that we talked about earlier, the 82 units, that's how it's all backed onto that.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's more confusing, or, I tried not to get into the weeds, but...
Thank you.
Chris, I had, I had one question. Do the, as long as they're under the terms of whether it's a CDBG, or they're considered affordable housing, do they ever revert to market rate, the apartments?
I've never seen them revert, because basically, any of them will have a 55-year term, so nobody in this room is going to be here in 55 years
Right.
To work, to what's going to happen, but more than likely, those will get rolled, because when I came to the state back in 2004, and, and they told me, yeah, we're going to roll these loans that have been over for 30 years, and I said, what about the ones in 55? And they were like, well, they'll roll again, somebody will roll them, but it won't be us sitting in this room. So, their goal in the long run is just to maintain that housing stock, because a lot of times, there is financing set in other jurisdictions that did funding, and those projects do convert to market rate. So those are called at-risk projects. And, we have a housing crisis. We had a housing crisis when Governor Schwarzenegger was here, we, we reemphasized that, tried to get more housing built, but it's just expanded from that period of time, and it just keeps increasing on an annual basis, because we're not producing the housing, and I'm not talking affordable, it's all market ranges, we're not producing the housing throughout the state, and that's what's caused the housing prices and the crisis that we have here.
Great, thank you, Chris, I just want to get that on there.
Okay.
Just to clarify on that.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions for Chris, or Pierre? Thank you, Chris. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville. Two concerns. One is that 12.2 and 12.3 are also grants that have a timeframe that have to be applied for, and 2.4 is also a block grant, but it seems like it has a longer timeframe. So if we're successful about getting this grant, and then, who actually owns the property? It seems to me, if the block grant is given to the city of Placerville, then the city of Placerville actually owns these two pieces of property when all done. And then, we're going to turn that money over to the developer to, to go ahead and, and fund the development of the, of the affordable housing. Is this going to mesh? By the time you do the NEPA for 2.4, and you've done the block grants for 2.2 and 2.3, are those timeframes going to be compatible with actually being able to build the affordable housing? And if not, how much risk is the city taking on here to ask for 1. whatever million dollars as a block grant? And if something happens, and 2.2 and 2.3 don't come through, or the developer doesn't come through, is the city liable, then, for the block grant to be repaid?
Thank you, Sue. Any other further public comments? All right, seeing none. In terms of Sue's questions, Pierre, I don't know if you want to, any comments there?
Well, I can go back to what Mr. Westlake was, was saying. First of all, we have two different types of monies coming in. The infill infrastructure grant are grants, and so there's no, there's no risk to the city for those. As far as the Community Development Block Grant, those would be monies given to the city, and then the city then in turn loans it to the developer. So, as Mr. Westlake said, the city will own a deed of trust, so it is the developer that owns the property. It's like, I got a mortgage on my house, the bank doesn't own the property, I own the property, there's a deed of trust. Same, same sort of concept, and Mr. Westlake can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't see any issue with any meshing of timelines. I think we probably wouldn't be here if there was an issue with that. So, does that answer your question? Do we need to have Mr. Westlake come up and get into the weeds?
Right, I think if the, if the CDBG grant was, was, for whatever reason, we didn't get it to cycle, it would just make the timing longer in terms of getting a final project done, essentially. Okay. Any further clarification on this? I'll move approval of the item.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second, further discussion, seeing none. Roll call vote.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations, good luck.
Yes.
Go file papers.
Yes. Get that NEPA done. All right, item 12.5. Adopt a resolution approving contract amendment number six, and issuance of notice for, to proceed to number 10 with REY Engineers, an amount of $0 for the Upper Broadway Bike Lane, Chanel School Road to Point View Drive project, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same. And this is the, batting cleanup is Ms. Neves.
Good evening, Mayor Saragosa, Vice Mayor Thomas, and councilmembers. Given the late hour, I'll be brief. The item before you proposes a no-cost amendment to the REY Engineers contract to address construction engineering for the Upper Broadway project, which is currently under construction. This amendment in particular addresses construction, construction engineering on the El Dorado Transit facilities, which are integrated into the project, and the city is grateful to have El Dorado Transit as a project partner. A savings and right-of-way engineering related to the transit stop was realized in design, and the proposed amendment shifts the budget from that item to construction engineering tasks of those facilities, resulting in a no-cost amendment, which is our second favorite kind of amendment or change to a contract. Staff's recommendations are summarized in the report before you this evening. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any questions for Ms. Neves? All right. Oh, nope, okay, seeing none, I'll open it for public comment.
Sue Rodman, Measure H, Measure L, which has some funds into this entire project, and I am very proud of our city engineer for being able to notice that it's already covered, and move the funds to where they can be better used, and it's my second favorite, too.
Thank you. I think I feel safe to say I can close the public comment, and bring it back to council.
Move 12.5?
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item 13, council reports. So first, El Dorado County Transit Authority.
Sure, you're the vice chair now.
Vice Chair?
We discussed some coronavirus precautions that the transit authority is taking, including kind of beefing up janitorial duties on the buses, and making sure that drivers have the safety and sanitation equipment and supplies needed, and they're closely monitoring that situation. We received the proposed budget and established the ad hoc budget review committee, which I'll be serving on, along with Chair Heidel. We received an operations report for the last six months, which showed positive trends in fare box recovery rates.
for the last six months, which showed positive trends in fare box recovery rates, ridership ratios to miles driven per hour in operation. The transit authority is working towards some fixed route service enhancements, which should be coming soon, hopefully in July. And they're monitoring some legislation from the state that's aiming to make public transit free for all youths and all seniors, which will have some financial implications for transit all over the state. And that's...
That won't cost anything.
No, no.
It's all free.
Is that another unfunded mandate?
Yeah. I guess, I guess the legislature that proposed it did recently recognize that they need to work out some financial details. Yeah.
Always helps. Thank you, Kara. Eldorado County Transportation Commission.
That's me again.
Well, there's, there's three of us, so go ahead and do it. I, I brought this, is usually what is usually prompts me, but go ahead. I'll tell you what you left out.
We received a really good summary of all the projects that the Transportation Commission is working on, which was really helpful, and you could view it if you're interested on their website. We also got the draft work program budget and an update on the Highway 50 hotspot study. Caltrans is currently pricing out four different options for the Highway 50 corridor through Placerville, which seems like it's going to be very interesting to see what those options are and what the prices are. And this will come up for public comment sometime in the summer. So it would be great to have public feedback on that. It's a really important thing for our community.
I know. I'm envisioning a sky bridge.
Yeah. That might be one of the options.
Yes. All right. Any other Transportation Commission comments?
Still, we need to make sure we're reaching out to the businesses in town when the Highway 50's closed up at the summit for the bridge repair.
Oh, that's, that's true.
Coming up down in May? Yeah, the second, the last two weeks of May.
Thank you.
Be interesting.
Patty, anything else?
I think we covered the, you know, what would interest Placerville mostly.
All right. LAFCO. We had a rather lengthy meeting just recently, and I want to thank Chief Tim Cordell for staying in attendance to the entire meeting. There were a couple of brief issues regarding fire districts and fire district consolidation. That still remains a hot topic. The other issue seems to be trying to find the budget and the staff to complete all the municipal services, the MSRs that are required to be done, and honoring our own schedule, recognizing that the LAFCO itself is behind. And so that wound up being a couple of two and a half hours, I think. Long LAFCO. So anyway, I'm happy to report that Eldorado County Fire Protection District is one of the districts that is in compliance with the information that LAFCO has requested. So we thank the chief for making sure that that happened. Thank you, chief. Thank you, councilmen. SAICOG, our meeting's upcoming. We're going to be meeting in the city of Davis this, in a couple of weeks. And Fire Safety Council, Fire Safety Council.
Apparently, everything was discussed already, so the...
So we're, we're covered.
The only thing I will say is that we have a regular meeting on the 19th. So there's not going to be any really, you know, program presentations or anything, but...
Same, same place, location and time?
At the Veterans Hall at 5:30.
5:30. Okay. Okay. Gone through requests for future agenda items, item 14.
I would ask that the council consider agendizing the response that we received from SMUD, so we can share that with our community and allow them to have input into that process.
I think that is a worthy addition to a future council item.
In cleave spare time, if you can look that in.
Yes. Any other requests? All right, seeing none. Upcoming items, we have the Upper Broadway Bike Lane Landscape Maintenance Agreement, our draft traffic calming manual is coming out, Mosquito Road contract change orders, and the Spring Street mosquito amendment with REY. And with that, 9:45, we are adjourned.